The Town Council, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If now if you would all remain standing for one moment. At this point in time, on behalf of the Town Council, our administration and all of the residents of the Town of Tiverton, I would like to ask for a moment of silence regarding the tragic incident that occurred in Portsmouth on Saturday evening. Our heartfelt condolences go out to the family of the young lady who unfortunately passed away. And although our department was not directly involved, they did have a role in that in that incident. And we'd like to extend our thanks to all first responders who who helped. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Tomito.
President.
Counselor Burke.
Present.
Counselor Janik.
Present.
Counselor DeMaderis.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Paul.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. So first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'd like to, if no counselors have any objection, ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus four D. Would any counselors like to pull any other items off the consent agenda? Four D. D as in dog or David's to my left. Or Denise to my right. I'm surrounded by Ds. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus four D?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. On four D, just a quick point of clarification. There was a little bit of a copy and paste error on the agenda. So I wanted to call out that the budget transfers of $5,000 is coming from 3310-5105, but $8,100 is from 3310-5108, $18,500 from 3310-5111, $12,410 from 3310-5125, and $6,500 from 3310-5168. And that is provided in the backup for all the counselors. It just wasn't on the agenda. So make that clarification. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve four D.
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed. Okay, public comments. First up, we have Karen Ephrum on items 10I and 10J. And I don't know if you'd like to speak now or wait till those items come up. It might be a little while because we do have some public hearings.
I think I'd like to speak now.
By all means, Ms. Ephrum.
And just for my clarification, how much time does this two items weigh up?
I mean.
Ten minutes.
Yeah, as long as it's not a forty-five minute diatribe. Yeah. I will let you say your piece, by all means.
Thank you.
So just name an address for the record, please.
Yep, Karen Ephrum, 74 North Christopher Avenue. I was scolded on March 25th, 2024 at a Town Council meeting by then-President Denise DeMaderis about the fact that there was an industrial park that wasn't built out when my parents bought land and built their house in a housing development that was created in the 1990s. In that same meeting, Councilman Edwards, now president, stated to me that nothing hazardous would be in the planned development park. Now the town is trying to change the rules and allow for a business that is not able to eliminate hazardous materials such as asbestos and lead and even PFAS, AKA forever chemicals, from its business operations. This lack of concern to the community at large by the planning board and Town Council is appalling, especially considering the council's position of refusing to allow a crematorium in the PDP due to the hazardous chemicals in that business's operations. A construction and demolition debris processing facility presents similar hazards, yet this town is more than willing to risk public health for supposed tax revenue. What sparked this is Mr. DeMello's proposed business that was initially a few dumpsters to be parked on land has now expanded to an up to 40,000 square foot building operating a construction and demolition debris processing facility around a watershed which also contains wetlands. Stafford Pond is the sole drinking water source for some of the town's residents. What seems to be forgotten is that Stafford Pond feeds into Otuppa Pond, and there is also a brook that feeds into Nonquit Pond. I will remind this council yet again that leaving untouched forest provides the best filtration for our drinking water, which former planning board chair, Ms. Patricia Hilton, also echoed at the December 3rd, 2024 Planning Board meeting. Attorney Monty stated he believed that a construction and demolition debris processing facility is considered light manufacturing. We are not interested in what Attorney Monty believes. Rather, we are all interested in facts. The fact is that construction and demolition debris processing facilities fall under waste management and recycling rather than light manufacturing, which was never the intention of the PDP per the state-approved Comprehensive Community Plan. It should not even be entertained that the zoning ordinance be changed, especially when the planning board didn't thoroughly address that testing for contamination does not stop contamination, and once contamination occurs, it's anyone's guess how quickly it will spread before it can be contained. No time limits were set for inside building operations, which is crucial given the excessive noise emitted from equipment, which needs established sound limits. The effects of any outside stored piles, which will affect stormwater contamination, and the traffic incurred from not only dropping off loads but selling of any loads. No one on the planning board stated that they had any expertise in the handling of hazardous material, and Attorney Monty specifically indicated that he and Mr. DeMello weren't experts on the topic either. To solely rely on the interested parties' existing experience is insufficient to make a community-altering decision. The optics that the town is ready to sell tonight to Mr. DeMello isn't good. Don't put the chicken before the egg. Do not execute the purchase and sales agreement with Mr. DeMello since you are just starting the process for advertising the zoning change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Peter Monas about the semi-quincentennial. Mr. Monas. And just name an address for the record, sir.
Peter Monas, 83, Captain Circle, in Tiverton. Quick commercial, two quick commercials. First of all, I would like to again try to break the news that the semi-quidcentennial, which is probably unknown to many people in town, in the area, in the state, stands for half, 500 celebration. And basically, do the math, it comes out the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, which is the focal point. There's many events before and after. The Revolutionary War lasted for eight years, and there was, like I said before, many events before and conquered and elected, and then the war itself, and then across the Constitution. And that was later on, took many years to develop and get a process. But hopefully, we will celebrate that event 250 years ago in our town, state, and our country. And one of the events I like to talk about, which is really not an event, but it's a promotion, is flying the red, white, and blue. Hopefully, many people in town, which they already do, because quite a few, that will fly a flag, a banner, bunting streamers, even a pinwheel on their lawn showing those colors and let the town show itself as a USA town. The best town in Rhode Island and in hopefully the country. But so I'd like to get everybody on board to prepare for next year because that's when it's really going to happen, July 4th, 2026, to get on board and try to fly those colors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monas. Now, I believe we have presentation of the proposed unified budget, but we're also doing a public hearing on it. So kind of lump them together. There's nothing under six, right? Okay. All right. So we're going to move right on to item seven. We can talk through the budget briefly. I'm not sure if anybody has any specific questions related to it, but we will open the public hearing. This comes after many months of work from diligent work from the Budget Committee. The proposed budget amounts to a total operational expense, or I should say a total revenue expense that the town needs to raise of $60,615,849, which will unfortunately represent a slight property tax increase of 2.715 with an estimated rate of $11.35 per thousand compared to this current fiscal year of $11.05 per thousand. This does put us underneath the 4% cap. And with that, I would like to open the public hearing. Would any member of the public like to speak on the proposed budget? Any member of the public? Mr. Mantel, by all means.
I just have a couple. I'm sorry, Sanford Mantel, Budway, Tiverton. Almost didn't make it tonight. I went to the wrong location.
My apologies, sir.
No, no, it's me. I should read the email. I got a question about when I when I looked at the paper. The question I had was the revenue for auto taxes. What is that?
So that's a great question. The state eliminated the automotive tax.
Right.
And part of the state's budget is to reimburse the town, so we can slowly off-ramp off of that. Because if they had eliminated it entirely, we would have had a huge shortfall. And most municipalities would have had to break the 4% cap in order to get over it. So it is a gradual declining number. Luckily, the state is still going to support some of those revenues for us. But it is something eventually that will go away.
I quickly looked at the budget. I noticed the contingency fund for the Town Council reduced quite a bit from 750 to 200. What's the source? What's the reason for that?
So another great question. Last year, coming into this fiscal year, we did have two major unions that we had to negotiate with, so both police and fire. And since those contracts are now settled, we don't have to put the money into contingency because the money ends up in those respective line items.
General Fund. What's the balance of the General Fund?
I'll defer to the treasurer. Yes?
I just want to make one clarification. So the amount of car tax revenue, when they got rid of the car tax, was frozen at that amount the citizens towns were to receive. So that's the amount we're receiving when it's frozen, and it'll be the same forever until the state decides not to fund it. But the goal is to hopefully fund it forever. But as we know, if things get tough, they start cutting things. But right now, that number stays constant until such time as the state.
Well, I found it kind of strange. It was the same. That's why I questioned it.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry. I was looking at the balance of the General Fund.
Madam Treasurer, she's looking it up. If you, when you say it, I'll repeat it.
Yep.
So the total General Fund, $7,385,815.
$7,385,815. Total General Fund.
The unassigned General Funds, $5,751,597.
So $5,751,597 for the unassigned General Fund.
Is the requirement still 3% of the budget for the minimum?
Yes, sir.
So what's the overage of right now for the fund, the unrestricted?
So the unrestricted, after we use, we used funds to balance the 25.
Right, I see that.
Of course, we have a closed 25. I've made a projection that we may need to use some of that, $700,000, which could change based on the sale of the final state, the third PNS.
Yep.
Pull off us. So we have to make a balance. So if you take the unassigned balance as of 6:30 and you back out 3%, and you back out what was budgeted, it leaves us with $2.4 million.
Over and above the requirement? Okay, that's still pretty good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are hopeful that the Charter Review Commission will propose increasing that cap from 3%. Or at least I am.
We all, no, we all, well, I am.
Any other members of the public like to speak on the budget? Any other members of the public? Third time, any other members of the public? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. Any members of the council like to speak on the budget? Counselor Perry. Counselor Paul. Counselor DeMaderis. Counselor Janik. Counselor Burke. Counselor Tomito. Counselor DeMaderis.
Yeah, so the increase after all was said and done and all the figures came was 2.7, which I always want to go 3 or lower. So I'm very happy with this number.
Wonderful. So with that. I, I, no, I.
David, David's looking at you.
Counselor Perry.
Did, but I left my sheet home, so I'm sorry.
No worries. All right. So with that, I believe what we need is a motion to approve the FY 26, 25, 26.
I believe that the state advertisement has not been done, correct, Mr. Roberts? So we can vote to approve it, subject to, there'll be another public hearing because now we have to comply with the state statute that says before we can adopt the taxing rate, we have to publish it. We haven't published it as of today because we didn't know whether this was going to be approved. So this will be a preliminary vote, basically, to approve it. And then we'll have another public hearing once that advertisement hits to comply with state law. This complies with the charter.
Okay.
Next step is to comply with state law. So but we should probably take a vote to adopt the budget as presented.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
It would be the proposed unified budget resolution.
Resolution, yes, I'm sorry. You actually have the document there, correct?
Yes.
So I make a motion to approve the proposed unified budget resolution as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed.
And just so we're clear, we're going to, where we had to add the dates, we'll add today's date into that ordinance, and that will be the new. Current, post current.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is a public hearing. This is the approval of proposed amendment to Tiverton zoning, Town Zoning Ordinance Amendments as listed. Since this is a public hearing, this encompasses definitions for the PDP for the car vault, creates or adds PD, planned development park floating zone to all districts in Article III, amendments to Article IV, as well as amendments to Article IV, Section 19, and Article VI, other district regulations. Would any member of the public like to speak on these proposed zoning amendments? Any member of the public? Any member of the public? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to close the public hearing. Any members of the council? Counselor Burke.
Several, Mr. President, thank you. Starting on, so I am working off of an older document, the advisory opinion. I think it's still the same language. But let me just double check. What item is this eight? Let's have them open simultaneously. So definition of a car vault, which I believe on in our packet is on.
It's highlighted.
Okay, it is.
So it's the first, I think it's the first highlight.
I think it's 84.
That is the page number. It wasn't clear because there's a bunch of numbers before it. So I just have a concern about a car vault having alcohol service. I just don't see that as fitting in. When I was on the council before, and this idea was proposed to us, that was not part of the discussion. That was not part of the later discussions that led to the purchase and sale. And of this property, as well, the zoning amendments that we're looking at are not limited to the planned development park. It includes industrial areas and, I believe, commercial areas as allowable use areas for this type of a program. So I would just suggest we not include that. The next is in the zoning table on page. Make sure the page number is the same. Michael, do you know if the page numbers are the same?
Twenty-two is the zoning.
Okay, 22. Yep. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure I saw that that was in other than just the PDP.
Page 26.
Page 26.
So the car vault, as proposed, would be allowing the highway commercial zone, the industrial zone, and the.
Correct.
So those three zones.
Correct.
Without car vault.
Correct. All right, I'm, car vault in and of itself, I'm fine with. It's the use, is the application of the alcohol to it. Then on page 23, and I thought we had discussed this, but on H on page 23, an allowable use is a family daycare home in the PDP. PDP does not allow residential use.
That is a very good point. Because you need a house.
You're right, a residential family daycare.
So I just suggest we strike that from there?
Why do you?
It could be, it could be a facility.
No, 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 no. By, look at the statute. There's, there's family daycare home, family group daycare home, and childcare center. So the two that require it to be in a residence are our family daycare home and family group daycare home.
Just let me look at the definition of it there.
Yep. I worked on this.
I know.
For decades.
I'm looking for the definition.
Yeah, the car vault, we found that one. Yeah, thanks. Oh, see, that would be okay because you don't have to be in a home to be a childcare center.
So is your proposal to strike, make that a P and N?
Yes.
All right. So if that's, if you're making that motion.
Motion to change on page, what did I say, 23, under H, under the PDP, change the P to an N for a family daycare. Is there any place else that it's allowed that it shouldn't be?
Would you be open to amending that to all?
Yeah, in any area that we do not allow residential. What are you suggesting?
Again, it's kind of funky the way that this is written. Some of these are classified under residential uses. So.
Well, you can put, under state law, you can put houses in industrial zones now. Houses can be in industrial zones.
But not necessarily the PDP.
No, I agree, but I'm just indicating, but there's also the, or it says that anything's allowed in industrial zone is also allowed in the PDP. So this would exclude the PDP. I'm just saying, stick, like, it doesn't make sense, but state law now allows housing in any.
That's probably what we talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have a hotel is also permissible in the PDP, so.
I would prefer, Councilor Burke, if we just, I think the change was, the yellow is the change.
Correct.
So if we just stick with that, we can go back to correct others, but I think.
But we are saying no to housing in the PDP on here.
Correct, yeah. And that's current law. I mean, that's current zone. We're not changing that.
Right. So to be consistent, I would suggest.
And one of the things, just so we're clear, what we did is the PDP used to just have a list of uses, which was outside of the district table. We now incorporated all those uses into the district table, so you don't have to go keep on flipping back.
Correct.
So people can go to the use table, look at what the PDP allows and or doesn't allow, and looks just right at the use table instead of having to go to a separate area of the code. So it's really more of a cleanup, and I believe we did talk about this. This is probably a miss on my part, but we did, we did talk about that one issue.
So what were you going to, you were going to say?
No, no, no. So any further discussion on Counselor Burke's striking of family daycare from permissible use in the PDP? Hearing none, all in favor?
My public comment as well. We should take public comment on that as well, once we, once we adopt the orders as amended. Which is a change, so the public has a right to comment on it if they want to.
Any member of the public like to speak on this proposed change? Any member of the public? Any member of the public? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? All right. So that is struck.
Who, who, who seconded that?
Okay, Counselor Burke.
I have it marked on page 25. I think it's just, there might be other areas. I just have a concern, our purpose of the park, the PDP, is for revenue. I have a concern if we're designated, designating institutions, organizations, et cetera, that are nonprofit. Because then we're losing, I'm on page 25, the section about public and semi-public uses. I'm throwing it out there. It's one of my concerns. I think we lose revenue for that, and the whole purpose of that park was to gain revenue.
I think that's the current law, Mike. I think that's, that's not a change. I think.
Well, it's all underlined. That's why it's in the yellow.
Well, it's all underlined because it's a new table.
Right.
But it's underlined because it's a, it's a new addition, the table. But I think it's, if you look at the PDP and the current ordinance, I believe that's allowed, but I'll look right now.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we can't change it.
But it's still.
That can't mean we can't change it.
No, but I'm suggesting that it's not new. What's, what's new is the location in the table. It was never in the table before. Now that's why it's new.
So Counselor Burke, which items would you propose changing from P to an N?
A, B. I guess it's really anything that is a not-for-profit entity, because it, because an art center, for example, could be either.
Yeah.
There are some in here that are identified as not-for-profit or nonprofit, but there are others that are not identified.
Technically, a hospital could be as well.
Right.
Some hospitals are for profit.
Right.
So A and B?
I'd like to make it a little more general that it's any item, any, any purpose that is to be operated by a not-for-profit entity. And it doesn't conform with the table, so I'm not sure how we would address that.
I think we'd have to alter the definition for some of these. So for instance, on E hospital, you'd have to amend or alter the definition in Article VI, Section 10 to stipulate some profit.
I think for now, and if we want to, we can come back to the others, I would for now at least take out A, B. Because they are, I'm just looking at the ones that are specifically designated. I think those are the two that are specifically designated.
Okay, I will second Counselor Burke's motion. Any members of the public like to comment on this proposed amendment? Any members of the public? Any members of the public? All right. Any discussion from the council on striking A and B in Section 4, public and semi-public uses from P to an N?
So can I just be clear? So the current, the current ordinance is currently written, allows under the PDP, and I certainly right to change it, any public or semi-public uses is described in Article IV, Section 4. So if you look at Article IV, Section 4, which I believe.
Unfortunately, the definitions.
No, no, but hold on. So that's the current law, Mike. That's the only change that's underlined. So if you look at Article IV, Section 4, that's churches, nonprofits, art center, all those things are order, as of today, before this change, are allowed in the PDP, as under the old ordinance.
What page are you on?
Well, I'm looking at the zoning ordinance, the current zoning ordinance.
Oh.
So that, we didn't, that's not really a change. Why it's underlined is because it's moved into a new table. So you're certainly willing to make those changes, but I just want to make it clear, those uses are currently allowed in that district. So this would be a change. And I just want to make sure we, if you're making that change, we know what they, what we did.
Any further discussion from the council? Counselor.
Do you have any change?
And so aren't we allowed only so many changes to, to the?
No, no.
No, okay. So it seems to me every time we get stuff from zoning or a CHA or a new document, it always seems there's something added or there's confusion or there's got to be a better way to understand all this and put it forward to us so we have the correct information besides what we're going through and trying to pick stuff out at the ninth hour. I just find it very confusing the way we're doing it.
So it gets confusing, but I just want to be very clear. You have an outline of the changes that were made. If you look at the explanation given by the planning board and by Mr. Romano, the changes are highlighted. This is not a change. This is, all we did was change the formatting of where the PDP used to be in the zoning code, and we added a column in the use table.
And the column is highlighted, correct?
The column is, because it's new.
I understand.
The, the, the column is new, but the material in that column, in other words, the uses are not new.
Exactly. So you're making my case. It's a new column that's highlighted with old stuff in it that's existing.
Well, because we, we're showing you we're adding a column where a column did not exist, so we have to show you that we added the column.
I get it.
Okay. Okay.
It's just, it's, it's just...
We're always here for a call.
I get it.
I was going to attempt to make it easier for the reader to find what they were looking for.
I, I've been doing a lot of study on this, I get it, it's just like, every time this document comes forward, there's something changed, a, a P, an N, a word, a definition, like, it's just, I just leave it all over the place with the zoning.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Burke?
Several.
Uh, no, I mean on...
Oh, on this.
On your proposed amendment.
So, we're just changing A and B to, uh, from a P to an N?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
And by the way, a, a church in an industrial zone, you know, it could be, uh, that could raise some constitutional issues, but we'll, we'll, we'll let it stay. Churches are...
I didn't.
You might have a church that's devoted to industrial uses, or, for the work...
We'll tackle that if we have to.
Yes, if there is a nineteen eighty-four suit, believe me, you'll, you'll be our first call.
I'm not saying there could be, I'm just, just putting that out there.
Alright, so, motion made by Counselor Burke, seconded by me. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, continue Counsel Burke.
Page twenty-seven, it's more of a question. Um, A and B, electric, A is electric power generating station, which is an N, and then electric power substation, which we don't have a definition that I could find of either of those, but we already have an electric power station, generating station, in the industrial park, and we're saying N for that. I know that would be grandfathered, but...
That's because, I believe that's because those electric power stations were previously allowed in an industrial zone. I'll look at that.
I'm not questioning them being there, I'm saying, we're saying no to an electric power generating station when we have one there.
And those are exceptionally high revenue producing entities. I believe at first glance, that should be a P as well.
And we're allowing that?
Electric power generating station is currently a no in the industrial zone.
How is it defined? Do we have a definition for it? Because there's none in here that I can find.
They pay us a lot of money.
That's current law, so just so we're clear.
Yeah.
So, that, that, uh... No, if it's not defined, then you just take the normal definition.
And I would assume what we have there is considered that.
Yeah, and I can't, um, so, was not allowed in industrial zone, at all, ever.
Yep.
At, at least from, and... I can't, I actually can't answer the, that, but it's not, it's not a additional use in the, uh, PDP as currently written as well, so...
So, I'm going to make a motion that we change the N for, um, Section five, A, to a P, found on page twenty-seven.
Second. Seconded by Counselor DiMedeiras. Alright, any members of the public like to speak on this proposed change? Any members of the public? Any members of the public?
Again, I just want to point out that it's yellow, because it's a new, it's a new column.
Understand.
But the use is now, okay, so, okay, alright. So, I want to think that we're trying to, something past you, it's...
No, no, no.
Copy what's in the current code.
Any, any further discussion from the council on Counselor Burke's proposed amendment of changing the N to a P?
We can do that separately.
Counselor Camino.
I'm just, I'm just going to add while you're changing out, and you may as well change C, because they have high voltage, like, transmission towers coming out of the, send a baller off.
Amended to include C.
Alright, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
So, it's both A and C?
A and C, yes.
So, P?
Counselor Camino, any in favor?
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay. Counselor Burke?
I am also going to suggest that we think about E, water tower, because my, same page. Some of the facilities that are being identified potentially in that zone, um, may make use of a water tower. They may not, but they may, so I think if we are trying to allow that, we should make, um, E, change E, Section five, E, water tower, from an N to a P.
Said that a long time ago, I'm glad you brought it up.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any members of the public like to speak on this proposed amendment? Any members of the public? Any members of the public? Okay, hearing none. Any further discussion on the changing of Section five subsection E from an N to a P in the planned development park? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed. Counselor Burke?
I'm going to skip part of my next comment, because I think we talked about it, it just doesn't make sense to me how we would have drive-throughs for bars, nightclubs, things, concert halls, but, um, this is on page thirty at the top, all, and it actually starts, the section starts the page before, it includes restaurants with or without entertainment. That I could see, but D there says, any of the above uses in this section with drive-through service is permitted. I agree, I'm not too hung up on it, but if somebody wants to...
Wasn't there a section, not special use, um, performance standards, where...
Was it addressed there?
It is, that, that's a change, that's, you adopted performance standards for drive-throughs.
Right.
However, um, there are no drive-throughs allowed for restaurants in town.
Well, but a bar or nightclub, why would you have a drive-through for a bar or a nightclub?
So, the, so therefore, does it not make sense to change this to an N?
That's...
No, we haven't, uh... Well, I think in front of planning, at the planning meeting, we have a, possibly a new business coming to town that might want a drive-through.
In the PDP?
So, this is, this is the PDP only.
Sorry, not in the PDP, thank you.
So, to be consistent, then I would suggest that we change D from a P to an N. So, I make a motion.
Do we have a second for Counselor Burke? Motion been made and seconded. Any members of the public like to speak on this proposed change? This would be drive-throughs in Section eight subsection D in the PDP, changing the P to an N. Any members of the public? Yes, Mr. Monas? Sorry, we just want to make sure those at home can hear.
The process seems very poor. I can't see why, from the planning board, or the zoning board, or whatever, before you guys get this, it should be a workshop where a couple members of the town council go over this, and the group goes over and correct all these errors, such as confusion. You shouldn't be doing it now at a town council meeting.
That's what a hearing's for.
I know that's here, but some of these areas shouldn't be even talked about tonight.
Okay, any other members of the public like to speak on this topic? Any other members of the public? Any other members of the public? Okay, hearing none.
So, this, um, I mean, this talks about drive-through service, right? So, what does it entail, drive-through service?
Correct.
Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead.
So, is our transfer station, once it's up and running, is that considered a drive-through service? You're driving through, you're unloading, and you're leaving.
The town doesn't apply, the zoning doesn't apply to the town.
It's just in these ones above. Just these ones above.
No, I, I don't know if we define it. Do we define drive-through?
It's only, only Section eight that can have drive-through services. You don't see recycling, et cetera. Section eight, restaurants, bar.
Oh, we haven't taken a vote yet, right?
No, we have not. Um, okay, so, any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, none opposed. Counselor Burke?
So, on the same page, it's more of a curiosity, and I don't know that any of us can answer it. On an earlier page, we allow hospitals and clinics for people. On this page, we're not allowing, and I know it's a carryover, veterinary offices or animal hospitals. Just seems odd to me.
Oh, change it to a P.
I, I, I'm getting a little reluctant, because we're making changes to the code. What the, what the things that were advertised were the car vault, the PDP table, but not these specific uses, so I get very concerned about...
But this is the PDP table. I, I, I hear what you're saying, Mike, but to me, this is everything that we're being asked to approve or not to approve.
Well, what you, no, but, but to be fair, Mike, the PDP table would, did not change, it was moved, the uses in that table were not changed, the, the location of the PDP in the table was changed. So, we didn't touch the uses, we just touched the location. It is a formatting change.
Okay.
Not a use change. So, I, I get, you know, we got a little far afield, like, if you look at the advertisement that went out, the advertisement didn't mention any of these changes that we're now talking about.
So, Mr. Solicitor, to clarify then, if we're looking for underlined items, it would be in the, uh, item, so if we're looking at page thirty-one, we could talk about Section ten, item B.
Right, if that whole line is changed, that's new. That whole line, retail business of less than twenty thousand feet square foot with liquor license, that was because of the bookstore in the village, that, that whole line is a new line, it's a new use. This other stuff was already there, so...
So, I will forego the rest, I, I disagree with you, but I will forego the rest of that piece. On the table.
Well, we are going to have another hearing.
Just imagine, in fact, really, that was because of the water use.
Okay. Okay, okay. So, I'm going to jump to page fifty-five, on the car vault. So...
Page fifty-five?
Fifty-five. Again, I think the page numbers are the same on both.
Hold on, hold on. These are, uh, objective criteria? Yeah.
So, a couple things, and I think I'd have to go back for one of these to the earlier section related to this. More of a concern, not necessarily a change, but in, um, seven, it talks about, uh, the facilities being able to be used for special events that receive a special events permit, but then above, I think it was above, no, um, below, automobile shows are permitted accessory event and shall not require a special use event permit. So, I just am unsure how one might not bleed into the other, and how do we different, differentiate what it does or does not need a special permit? Not saying they shouldn't be allowed, just...
This was, I, I can't comment, this is what the planning board recommended, these are objective criteria, so, I, I can, number seven is that, if you're, if you're a member of the club, and you want to have an event within that club, you're okay, like, if that's, you're a member of the club, you can get to use the bar, but if you want to rent out that facility, if I, if Mike Marcello wanted to use that facility and have a, a toast to the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary, I'd have to come, I would have to get a special use permit.
But I didn't think you could do, I didn't think they would rent it out. Only, only for members, it's only for members, because that is the only thing.
Special events, though, like, so if the, if, if...
If the members wanted special events, then that's okay.
Right, a member could have a special event, and they can, the special event could be in honor of Mike Marcello, right? So, and they want to have the special event, and they, they, a member could say, we're going to have a special event, and, so...
Be very careful, there will be a special event for Mike Marcello.
It's up. So, when the planning board put this together, they modeled it after a similar car vault in Newport, and with the kind of rules in place that, that Newport uses, and they would not be renting it out for, you know, like, a, a VFW type thing. It would be for members only. If the member wanted to have guests, they could bring guests in, but it was, the member had to sponsor something.
So, he could have...
As, as they do in the Newport.
And I think that's how it reads, you could have an event for the club, and then if the club member wants to have a special event outside of the club, they can, they can do so. Right, so there's two, there's two possibilities. The, the in club members, close to those people, don't need a special permit, however, if that club member wants to have a special event, host a wedding, whatever, at that place. I, I'm not saying wedding, because it's only, it's only a bar.
It's not a big...
It's not a big, it's not, well, as proposed, it's not a big area. They would, they wouldn't need it. I mean, this is, that's, this was...
I was just trying to figure out how you differentiate the two.
It's, it was more like a small, social, not like a, not like a wedding, not a, not a banquet, not a banquet hall.
As proposed, it's not, it wouldn't be that big, it's not a big area.
Counselor Burke, does that satisfy?
So, that satisfies that piece. Number seven, though, I will make a motion that we strike, um, A bar, and then capitalized dining.
Counselor Burke's made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any member of the public like to speak on the proposed change? Any member of the public? Any member of the public? Alright, further discussion? Any discussion from the council?
I mean, mine, I talked about earlier, and I would want to go back to that part, too.
Counselor Camino?
I mean, I think, you know, depending, I guess, regulations, I think having a, a little bar for the club members, I think it's an important thing to have. I know all car guys like to sit and talk about their cars and have a nice cocktail or beer, so, I think if it's done right, I think it'd be an asset to the car vault.
Any further discussion?
I'll just add, I agree with Counselor Camino's position, um, and as a member of, for instance, the Tibbetty Yoc Club that does not have that type of facility, it's just, it's discouraging that they don't, and I wish they did, so... Any, uh, further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Counselor Burke?
I think... That's it?
Any other members of the council?
I'm going to vote that one up, I'm not going to go back to the other one.
Any other members of the council have discussion or proposed alterations to the zoning as amended, or as presented here, as amended thus far?
I just have a question, so, Mike, you let us vote on changes that you don't think we should have?
I'm concerned about the changes that we made to the use table that were not highlighted in yellow all across the board.
Alright, so was that a problem with this vote?
I, I think, I think we could make, well, I, we might, we might have to do it again on the, those changes, those weren't really, I mean, those were already in the code, so I need to look into it a little bit more carefully, but I'll, I want to talk to the, Assistant Solicitor regarding that, but I think we should move forward with the other stuff, anyway.
Counselor Camino? Don't we still have, uh, in the use tables, we have more categories that are supposed to still be coming to us for us to go through?
Yes.
Do you have a public question, Mr. President?
Oh, I'm s- by, by all means.
Karen F. from seventy-four North Christopher Avenue, here again. I don't agree with the fact that anything that wasn't on the agenda should be continued and actually enacted on. It doesn't give the people, the public the ability to speak if they hadn't known about it. So, I really think that you should just reconsider that.
Yeah. So, Mr. Solicitor, bearing that in mind, would we need to make a second motion to rescind? Yes, Counselor Burke?
Motion would be to pass the zoning ordinances as amended before, as subject to legal review, and coming back to us with that legal, any recommendations on that legal review.
So, pass the changes, including your amendments?
Yes.
To the table?
Yes. But I leave that to your opinion.
I know, I, I...
Shouldn't we have another meeting?
Yeah, I, I, I prefer, I prefer to revert to the table that was presented. To the extent that you want to make these changes, we'll do it in another, another section, but obviously the, the columns that were, excuse me, the rows that were highlighted, But obviously, the columns that were, excuse me, the rows that were highlighted, those were new language. So I think the better way to do it is revert, revert back to make, to all the changes that you made to that table, and then pass, pass, pass it as is with the other changes that were certainly- Here's the problem, right? The problem is that we have the advertisement. We advertised specifically what was going to be up for discussion. The PDP table that Counselor Burke changed was not a change other than a formatting error. Not era, but putting in a different format, except for those rows-
Yes.
-that were yellow, which were only, which was, which is only one, which was two, where two, I think one was the-
No, so section, so it was, section, section four, section four subsection S. Section seven-
What page? I'm sorry.
Twenty-six.
So, section seven subsections D and E, which we didn't touch.
Twenty-nine.
Subsection ten, or section ten subsection B, which we did not amend. And that's it. So essentially, the proposed changes that we voted on, we should probably re-advertise and then vote on it again.
So I'll make a motion to rescind all of those changes that we've made thus far to the table with a re-advertising for those at a later date.
So, for the table.
I will-
Yeah, I just want to, I want the record to be clear.
I will second.
Thank you. So that would be the family daycare. Section four A and B under the PDP. Church is a nonprofit organization.
Yep. Section five-
Hold on.
A, C, and E.
Yep. A, C, and E. And I think that was it.
That's-
Oh, wait a minute, and the drive-through, the drive-through.
And the drive-through. That would be eight, eight D under the PDP. So only the changes to the PDP and those sections I mentioned.
Correct.
So voters rescind those, and I think that's probably the safest way to do it.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Oh, Counselor Camino.
I mean, we're going through this again here. I would like to recommend, want to have a workshop with the council, not a public hearing, just a workshop with the council and the planning board to go through this stuff again when their final draft or whatever, so we can all sit down, understand it at a workshop, and go through this, right? So we're trying to define, we're trying to define what their changes are and try and, if you didn't watch the meeting and understand their changes or their reasoning behind it, I think we need to have a workshop before we go through this chart.
Ask them why they didn't change some of the stuff that Mike noticed, because we already-
Well, this started with us, to be clear. This, this started with us.
Right, I know.
Yeah. So we sent this to them for recommendations, and they didn't change anything other than what you see marked in red.
Right. And we have some things that are missing that we asked to change that haven't been changed.
We're waiting for those.
So I would like to see a work, Mr. President, some type of workshop, if we could all fit it in our busy schedules.
I'm happy to schedule it for you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All, Counselor?
This is a, this is why the chart needs to be changed, so every two years, there's not a wipeout of the council, and there's continuity, because you lose track of this stuff, and then stuff gets changed, and stuff gets lost.
All right. So motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Okay, unopposed. So, thank you. All right. Any members of the council like to discuss any of the other proposed edits? Any members of the council? Okay. Hearing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Tiberton Town zoning ordinance as presented. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed?
Two opposed, one abstained.
Those are the car vault.
Yes.
No, it's for the entire package.
A bunch of stuff.
We already passed the car vault, correct?
Yeah, it was for the entire package.
That vote passed the car vault.
That, yeah, right.
So you have seen, just to, you know, if you wanted to vote for it.
It definitely was not clear. I mean, I thought previously we just voted on the, on the car vault stuff to pass through with Mike's-
No, 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 so- My amendment-
That was a proposed amendment.
Right. Which failed.
This is an ordinance that was prepared in sections because we filed a section of the ordinance.
It was too much.
This is, this is my point exactly. There's way too much going on.
They worked on too much.
This was limited to two things.
I know, Mike.
That came from the council, excuse me. It was the car vault, the car vault definition,
Yes.
the review standards for the car vault, the fixing of the, allowing a liquor license in a twenty thousand dollar, twenty thousand square foot retail, which was the, which was the, well, from the, in the VC zone for the bookstore. Right? And allowing dumpsters in the, in the, open lot storage in the PDP. Those were the changes that came from us, sent to the planning board.
So I would like to change my vote in affirmative to second.
Let the record show, Counselor Camino voted in the affirmative. Okay. Next item is approval to grant one class A liquor license package store by lottery, subject to meeting all legal requirements. We have two applicants, LNT LLC, DBA Secanet Liquors, and East Horizon Incorporated, DBA Hot Shot Liquors. We are going to commence the lottery. Our town sergeant has agreed to pull the-
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't we have discussion on both of them first to decide if we had any concerns about any of them holding a license?
That's up to the council, right? So this is, we have two competing licensees. The luck of the draw, you can talk about it once the drawing is made. The fact that they were all put in the, put in the pot together, that's a decision. It doesn't make sense to have a public hearing on, you have two applicants before you, right? You have two public applicants. Doesn't mean that if the, if you have a concern about the name or the person who, the entity that's drawn, doesn't mean you can't deny it. You could, you could still deny it, but you're going to, you're going to have a discussion on that. Right now, we have two competing applicants, right? One may be more qualified than the other, or we don't know, right?
Right.
But to give everyone a fair chance, we're putting the name in the hat. This is, I believe, what the council decided last time. We talked about this. Did we, we talked with, excuse me, with the clerk's office, I'm sorry.
No, we didn't. Council hasn't talked about this at all.
The council hasn't discussed this at all.
So, Madam Clerk, in your research, because the clerk did do extensive research on what other communities had done, it seemed like lottery was the way to go. Reading through the minutes, it seemed like they, some, some discussed the, whether or not each applicant was, met the standards, I guess.
Mr. President, it basically boils down to they had a public hearing for each application, because the butters are notified, and they need to be able to speak their piece for each application. So they, the town would go through and bring up the first applicant, they'd open the public hearing, the council would review the application,
Okay.
and then vote to move it forward to the lottery. Then take the next applicant, and so forth and so on, review the application, and then vote to move it to the lottery.
Okay.
And then, if you have multiple applicants, then you do the lottery.
Okay. So then that will be the process that we'll follow, if that's acceptable to the council. Counsel Janik.
We just added liquor licenses for restaurants. So is there a maximum number of licenses that we can have in town for liquor stores?
Yes. So it's based on population. It's a convoluted formula. Once you get over twenty thousand residents, the bar to get-
So it's twenty thousand.
The bar to get to the, we only had three, and our ordinance said that we could only have three. But based on our population size from the last census, we actually could have four. And so we advertised and amended the ordinance to track whatever the state law says as far as the number of licenses we're allowed to have. So again, once you get over twenty thousand, I think the next hurdle you have to clear is like twenty-five thousand, but it's based on certain metrics. So regardless, we've created now at a prior meeting the fourth license, and now we have two applicants for that one fourth license.
Thank you.
So. All right. So with that, I will, I will open up the public hearing. We'll just go in order as listed here. So first up would be LNT LLC, DBA Secanet Liquors, Patrick Burns, six fifty-one Main Road in Tiberton. So since this is a public hearing, Mr. Burns, if you'd like to speak?
This is the old paquin in Charles property.
Correct. But any members, since the butters were noticed, any members of the public like to speak on the qualifications of this applicant? Or Mr. Burns, if you'd like to speak? All right. Any other members of the public like to speak on the applicant? Any other members of the public? Okay. So we'll close the public hearing on LNT LLC. Members of the council?
I-
Counsel Burke.
Have concerns of criminal record. I'm not going to go into detail unless it's okay, but I have concerns about the criminal record.
No, it's not.
No, you can, you're absolutely allowed to talk about any concerns you have, including the moral character, fitness of the applicant, so.
So the applicant has multiple aspects, both here and in New Hampshire, for things related to what I'm looking at, drug, drug control. Some of these are misdemeanors, I will note that, domestic violence, including withholding a telephone from the victim, assault and battery. Those are just some of the-
Do you have the age of those? I think it's important if you're going to put on the record-
Yes, they are, some are, I'm seeing two thousand seven, two thousand six. I think the most recent, if this is going backwards chronologically, is two thousand thirteen for driving after denial, suspension, revocation of a license. So for me, that does not fit who I would want to have operate a liquor store in our town.
Any other members of the council? Counsel Perry, Counsel Paul, Counsel Camino.
I mean, I, I have some concerns about the same thing a little bit, but, I mean, there was quite a bit of time that has passed through here, and I do think everybody's, gets a second chance at life and to correct themselves, and maybe I was a thing of the past, so. To be honest with you, my concerns are more of, you know, we have a lottery, we had to possibly have another package store in Tiberton. We have several already, three. My concerns are locations, we're back on the main road, we're going to have trash, we're going to have nip bottles. So my concern is more of, you know, why another package store in Tiberton? But I know we can't stop a business, so that's my concerns. I, I think we should just put both names in the lottery, but-
Okay, Counsel DiMatteis, Counsel Janik, any comments? All right, so-
We have the license, so.
Counsel Janik?
I said, we have the license, so I think we, sorry.
No worries. Just want to make sure everybody can hear it.
We, we have the license, so I think that we, we should award it to someone.
We have to just choose.
Are we obligated to award the license?
If they meet the applicant's requirements, yes, you are. You created the license, right? So there was no license that was there. So the council took the affirmative step of creating the license. Now you have two applicants. It's now your discretion to, not, really not discretion, if they meet all the legal requirements and obligations, then they have to, then you have to grant it. But I just want to be clear that it is permissible under our law to look at the, what they call the moral character. And you, the council has a lot more discretion in granting a new license than it has of a renewal or trying to revoke a license. So you're at your highest power right now, so, but I just want to make that clear. So there's nothing, there was nothing improper, maybe a little uncomfortable, but there's nothing improper about bringing those facts forward. And the law, the law recognizes that fact.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, I'd like a motion to certify-
I'll make a motion that we do not move Mr. Burns' application forward.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. So a vote in the affirmative is it does not move forward?
To the lottery, right.
To the lottery. A vote in the negative is it does move, it would move forward.
I would ask for a second vote, actually, on that, just to be clear.
All right.
An affirmative motion, I mean, affirmative motion to move it forward.
Got it. Okay. So motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Not moving it forward.
Not moving forward?
Opposed. All right, so-
So now you want a second motion in the affirmative?
No, that's it.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Okay. So next public hearing is on East Horizon Incorporated, DBA Hot Shot Liquors, Mohammed Kira, eight sixty-one Main Road, Tiberton. Would any members of the public like to speak on this applicant?
Good evening, members of the council. I'm here with my client, Mohammed Kira. And we let our application stand by itself. We'll answer any questions, but we have nothing further other than to review the application we think we put together the best we could. Thank you for your consideration.
Any other members of the public like to speak to the applicant?
Gail Lawrence, long passed away. I just really have a question. If this applicant's application is not satisfactory, does the license just remain open and neither goes forward to the lottery? Is that, is that a correct assumption?
Yes. Well, and, and here's, and here's the issue why we have to do it this way, because technically speaking, neither application was completed, because they can't formally complete their application without being granted a license in order to go get things like insurance and all the other statutes that, statutes that they have to satisfy. So the next phase would be finalizing the application and submitting it before we could grant them a license.
Okay. So, but it is within your authority to say neither applicant satisfies-
Correct.
-the requirements. Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to speak on this applicant? Any other members of the public? Any other members of the public? All right. So we'll close the public hearing. Questions or discussion in front of the council? On this application.
Yeah.
Counsel DiMatteis.
So this is at the gas station, the vacant lot?
Just to the south of it, yes.
Just to the south. Okay. I just want to make sure I know where that was.
It's on the same lot.
Counsel Burke.
Yeah.
It's on the same lot.
It's the same lot. It's the vacant area of it.
So- And I'm going to ask you that question, so, Chief. So I share Mr. Comito's, Counsel Comito's, concerns about location of either of these. At the same time, I want you to be able to use your property effectively. So I think you know that one of the things I do is I chair our North Tiberton Committee, and we're really looking at making sure that whatever goes in there, and it's an allowable use, fits into the character of the community. So when you build something out, I'm hopeful, if you get the license, that you will really look hard at what, what it should look like to fit into the character and to, especially in that area, decrease potential traffic congestion.
Counsel Camino.
So the, the one thing I do notice about the applicant's current business right now at that location is it is kept very, very clean, right? So to me, that's a bonus, and moving this forward. I think he would maintain, you know, after putting a lot of money into this new building, new build, the character and the, and the presence of building a good-looking building to suffice his needs. I, I think he would be taking care of the property to make sure it's clean as he takes, maintains his property now.
Any other members of the council? Counsel Janik.
Just to clarify, this is a whole new building.
Yes.
So the gas station would stay?
Yes, the gas station will utilize the old building. We just redone the whole thing. And this is going to be a separate with a separate ingress egress. One is going to be taken from the cul-de-sac in the back and one on the front. And we have already, half of the cul-de-sac is currently in our property. So we're trying to figure out how to maneuver like a trailer parking, so there's no congestion on the road. We can currently fit about three trailers. We can currently fit about three trailers simultaneously, tractor trailers in there. It's like a triangular lot. Our road width along the lot is about 395 foot. So we can easily manage the traffic. And I'm working with Neil Hengrani, so we're, we're doing the, it'll be properly presented to the planning board.
There will be a review, a development plan reviewed by the planning board on this, so. Those issues about aesthetics and those things can be vetted at that point, assuming, again, you would, you would grant this subject to meeting all legal requirements, so he's still got a lot, he's got a long way to go. But he can at least begin the process, because if you do grant it, he would have a license subject to meeting all, all legal requirements.
And in anticipation of this, of this meeting, I know, I think all of us on the council were sent by Mr. Kara, what the design concept would look like. And, I mean, again, I'm not on the planning board or the zoning board, but to me, it looks like it fits the character of Tiverton, especially with the little couple on top.
All right, any other discussion from the council?
One question for the solicitor, and maybe you've talked about this, since it was advertised as a lottery, we can still only move it forward to a lottery with one person in it, okay?
I mean, it's not a lottery, it's probably still longer a lottery because the council exercises rights to, to remove someone from that lottery. Could have been clearer, to be honest with you, as how we were going to proceed, but I think the-
So the motion should be to move this forward to a lottery or not?
No, the motion is to grant the license.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
And where would it be appropriate, Mr. Solicitor, to articulate the specified reasons why?
Moving this one forward?
No, not this, the prior applicant.
I would think that I'd like to at least put on the record the reasons why the council, or those members of the council who didn't move the, grant the other license, to put on the record. I know that you indicated at least your concerns, but I think we need to put that on the record as to why the four votes that, or five votes that didn't go forward, why, why you decided not to move that one forward, to put it in the lottery, so. But let's vote on this one first, and we'll go back.
All right, so with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to, is this to grant the license?
Grant, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Okay, to grant the Class A liquor license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, to East Horizon Incorporated, DBA Hot Shot Liquors, Mohammed Kara, 861 Main Road, Tiverton.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
All right, motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
All right. If we can just go back to the original, the first vote, and I'm going to clear, I'm real, in, in giving the council the advice that I'm giving them, I'm relying on a case that was filed in 1996, it's called Alfred D. Decredico versus the City of Parofin's Board of Licenses. And in that case, the Supreme Court of, excuse me, the Superior Court of the State of Rhode Island indicated that when considering liquor license applications, the issuing authority should consider a number of factors, including the financial stability and responsibility of the applicant, the person's interest in the pecuniary, in the enterprise, the, the fitness of the applicant, his moral character, and previous violations of law on his part. Furthermore, the issuing authority should examine the location of the premises to be particular license. So that is a, it is a, a valid reason, legally reasoned. I just want you to articulate those reasons on the record, so in case there's any type of challenge in the future.
Counselor Burke.
So for my purposes, as I had mentioned earlier, the criminal background check that we have received, even though some of them are old, are of concern to me for someone who would want to operate a liquor establishment in our town, because it is inclusive of violations related to driving under the influence or driving after you've been, have had your license revoked for that reason. They are issues that have occurred in multiple states, also domestic violence. And as someone who has worked in the field of trauma for all my life, I want to uphold the victims of those and support those folks as much as anything. And I think by allowing someone with that moral character, and I appreciate Counselor Comito's comments, but doesn't mean I have to grant somebody a license for a liquor establishment.
I agree with Mike, and I thought that that was assumed because of his argument that we, yes. So for the record, it was his criminal background that disturbed me.
Counselor Janik.
Based on a BCI check that the council received.
Right.
And I can, here we go. We don't share, uh- I, I concur with both counselors. It was the criminal background check that was concerning.
Counselor Paul.
I shall echo the others as well, as to the past infractions and concern.
Counselor Perry.
I also concur with the fellow counselors at the end of the table, and I also agree with the moral aspect of that applicant.
All right, that satisfies the solicitor. Okay, so next item is a public hearing. Jared Machado, Pine House Kitchen and Bar, 13 Crandall Road, looking for approval to extend hours of operations for his Class BV liquor license, entertainment license, and vicuancy license from Monday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. To Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Friday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Since this is a public hearing, I'd like to open the public hearing. And please state name and record for the address, or name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Virginia Paceridis, I live at 28 Crandall Road. I live across the street diagonally from the Pine House. We've had many issues with the Pine House with noise, music. We have had the police over many times. They do not listen. They are disrespectful. And we have concerns of them extending their hours, because right now, what are their hours? 11 o'clock closing. They go with music loud up until 2:00 to 3:00 a.m. And I know we've had the police over at least four or five times, we've called. They don't listen. I know our neighbors, we've talked to them, have done that numerous times again. They don't listen. Since they don't listen to the police, what is our next step? Where do we go to have them obey the law? We do not want them at all to extend their, I'm sorry to say that, I wish it was different, but we do not want this to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this request? Yeah, yeah, that's, public hearing by all means. It's your application, so.
So my name is Jared Machado, 31 Big Verol, Dartmouth, Mass., I'm the owner of the Pine House. So, I mean, long story short, there's been a couple of different things where, when I first opened and I first initially bought the place, I thought I was doing a transfer of a liquor license, so I'd be able to operate in the same amount of time that the previous owner was. And alls I want to do is open, you know, a nice respectful family place. By all means, I listen every time the cops come. What happened was, we had a patio, and we had like an ambient music coming in. And that, a couple of times, what happened, we forgot to turn off when they were cleaning up, wrapping up things at the end of the night. I got the whole thing rewired when I got a complaint about it the first time. So now what happens is you can shut it off in sections, so I can shut off the outside and then only leave the noise inside. But as far as purposely doing anything, I, there's no attention, like, I can't believe even my ears on the things I've heard from my neighbor, rather than just kind of talking to me. There was one gentleman, I think he's over there, he came in one time, said, "There's noise, there's noise." And I said, "What noise?" He caught me off guard, I was making drinks, helping the bartender, and really wasn't able to talk about it. But then, like I said, the next day, got the whole place rewired, and I closed the windows. I got a decimal reader to make sure I'm within my limits. When we do have live entertainment, it goes till midnight. It is prohibited till 12, you know, 12:30 on there on some days, and some days are four. That's just because I think I carried some Wally's hours over and some not. But, um, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to do what it takes to have a place open. I'm family, I have a, I'm a dad, I got two kids. If you go there, you're never not going to see me, I work seven days a week to make the place go. And believe me, you think I want to be there till 1:00 a.m. or 2:00 a.m.? No. But that's what it takes to pay my bills, and if the place is, you know, filled, and respectfully, and you got some entertainment, and there's some people that want to hang out a little after, that's all I want to do. I want to go with the laws that the state allows you to. So when somebody looks up something, they can say and everything, you know, it's, that's all it is at the end of the day. If you come over and talk to me, you text me, things are a little loud. I'm the most respectful person to talk to anybody with anything, as far as the place. It's got baby seats everywhere, it's a family-oriented place. There's no drugs, no overdrinking, everybody gets carded, no one to drink in. Very respectful place, I'm just trying to make a living and do what it takes.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this applicant? By all means.
When this first started, my husband did go over and ask to, to keep the music down, and the response was they did not know how to. And it has been ongoing, and the latest time that the music was on was on May 30th, past couple of weeks ago, and the music was on until 3:00 a.m.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Mr. Administrator.
So on behalf of the Police Department, which I've spoken to, I'm also going to object at this time to the extension of the license. In speaking with the Police Department, they have been to the Pine House, and this is no disrespect to the owner, but they've been to the Pine House no less than six times in the past year, four in the past two months. They have witnessed that the establishment has been open past its already prescribed hours and has been serving alcohol. So I am preparing a report to give to the council to recommend a show cause hearing about the violations that the Police Department allegedly has witnessed. So I object at this time that we extend any hours until the Police Department can present their evidence about the violations that they've witnessed.
So as far as that, when the, when the police officers came, or they're coming, honestly, and it's all because of the neighbors, they never came because of any complaint, any fight or anything inside there. And honestly, I thought I was obeying the law, because like I said earlier, I just thought it was a transfer license. I wasn't like, "Let me be sneaky," or "Let me be," you know, anything like that, and not abide, obey by the laws or my rights. By all means, I showed the officer that went there, we talked about it, showed him the, it said, "Operating license." So I said, "Sorry, that says my operating license." But that doesn't mean the liquor license, because it says anywhere you Google it, just on, like, to the normal person, if you Google it right now, it says Saturday, Sunday, Monday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And then it says Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. So that's what I was going by. It wasn't like, "Oh, let me, you know, try to pull a fast one on anybody, let me try to be sneaky." By all means, that's, that's the last thing I want to do. I want to invite every police officer to eat there, be a respectful place, and it's, it's not to do anything shady, trust me on that.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
You Googled what?
I was, so if you Googled a liquor license in, of the state of Rhode Island, like the-
That's the allowable time.
Yeah, the allowable time.
It's not what you were permitted to do-
No.
On your application.
Correct, which I understood, because when I first opened-
So you were permitted to go to what time on your application?
So to my understanding, it was till 2:00 a.m.?
No. You had an application, you put on an application what time you were permitted to go to. What time was that?
Correct, but that was, for my, my understanding, I had a misunderstanding, I put midnight. But that was a misunderstanding, that was for food. I thought I could go till 2:00 a.m. because what, what the laws of Rhode Island says.
You should have talked to your lawyer, because your application sets the end time and the beginning time of your day. I could Google anything, but the town is permitted to lessen those hours. So you then are saying to us that you went beyond your hours that you were permitted to do, which was a violation, which is what the administrator is talking about, which is why he's suggesting a show cause hearing.
Not, not on purpose, in, in my intentions, and I didn't do it intentionally, is what I should say. I thought my liquor license was carried over to Wally's, and you could just continue the time. I understand now, that's why I'm here to-
Wally's was not people to open till 2:00 a.m. Wally's was the 11:30. Wally's was not at 2:00 a.m.
I believe, even if you see like on his sign and old pictures and things like that, it says until 1:00 a.m., even on his sign, open. So I'm not, I'm really, I'm not sure, because if you look at Google pictures, you can see his old sign, it says Saturday, you know, Friday and Saturday till 1:00 a.m. at least, it didn't say two, but it did say one. It was just real confusing, that's, that's why we're here tonight. I kind of, I wanted to extend it to, to the time that I thought I was allowed. It wasn't intentional.
Thank you. All right, so any other members of the public like to speak on this application? Mr. Monas.
I like that, it's a technical question. This is a restaurant serving liquor, is this required that meals be served or food be served? And he's closing his restaurant down earlier, and just serving drinks after a certain time? Is this legal?
It's a BV license, a BV license requires a service of food with the time, at the time you're serving liquor as well. It's not a, it's not, it's not a bar license.
That could, oh.
Correct.
So that wouldn't include popcorn or tips, or like a bar?
That's a bar license, that's a Class C, this is a Class BV, yep.
Good question, Peter.
So I just want to point out, the clerk, again, state law does allow licenses to be open till, I believe, 2:00 a.m. But the council has discretion as to whether you not, you grant that. And if you look at the agenda, the clerk is very good about putting, so the license that was granted by the council set, set the hours, and those hours, I believe, are actually on the license itself, are they not, man? So when the person is issued a license, it states the hours on those licenses. And those are the hours that that person or the licensee is expected to follow, including the entertainment license, which the clerk reminded me that the entertainment license is limited to entertainment inside the establishment only, not outside. So those are the parameters the council set, and those are the, until those hours are changed or by the council, those are the hours that the applicant, excuse me, that the licensee is expected to follow. And to the extent that the Police Department believes they have show cause to, a show cause hearing because there's a bit of violation, that's a separate issue that we'll deal with at another time. But the only thing that's before you now is a request to extend those hours.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Solicitor. So if there's no more members of the public, I'd like, would like to speak on this public hearing. I'd like to close the public hearing, and members of the council, is there discussion? Counselor Burke.
I think we've heard enough to, at this point in time, not grant the request.
Second. Is that a motion?
Counselor Comito.
So in the past couple of weeks, I've had some citizens of the town contact me about this situation. And I'm kind of glad that Jared said he was there seven days a week. So the witnesses that have contacted me actually were pretty disappointed with how management handled the situation from within the establishment. And as our police officers are leaving the scene, people are actually screaming out the window at him, harassing our police officers as they're trying to do the job. I, I think that's appalling. This is supposed to be a family-oriented business, he opened up that way as a family-oriented business. And I don't think appropriate behavior is, or they're managing their place correctly. I, I would look forward to a, a show hair cause, the hearing that the administrator wants to have. And then maybe at that time, when his license is renewed, if we don't have issues, we could possibly maybe extend his hours at that time. But until he proves, or the establishment proves that they can handle the business properly, I don't think we should grant the hours. Thank you.
Counselor Perry.
My parents saying that nothing good happens after 10 o'clock. Leave in mind 1 o'clock and 2 o'clock.
Mine's at midnight.
Midnight for you? Okay. Well, I'm a lot older than you. So I would like to make a motion that we deny this right now. So there's already a motion, I'll- I'll make a, you didn't, I'll make a motion to deny this.
Okay, motion been made by Counselor Perry, seconded by Counselor DiMederos. Any further discussion? Counselor Janik.
So my understanding is that the entertainment is all inside, because I've been there, never that late. And it was only like one person singing, like acoustics, acoustical guitar. But if we're talking a family, family business, 2:00 a.m. But if we're talking a family, family business, 2:00 AM seems very, very late, even 1:00 AM on weeknights. Just my personal thought. I don't think we have any, do we have any businesses open that late in town?
No.
Primavera is what, midnight?
They're all around. Well, the casino, it does 24 hours.
Okay, so any other discussion from the council? I would just add again, my objective is to make sure the businesses succeed in this town because we desperately need the diversified tax revenue. But given the fact that the police department has concerns, I would be in favor of denying the extension for now, not to say that again, it could not come back up in the future, but given the concerns from the police department, I think we need to go through that process first before we amend the hours to the license. So hearing no further discussion, the motion on the floor is to deny the alteration of the hours. All those in favor? None opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda, appointments and resignations. We have to acknowledge the resignation of Stuart Hardy from the North End and Industrial Business Park Advisory Subcommittee, effective 5/23/2025. Like to entertain a motion to accept Mr. Hardy's resignation with regret. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Counselor Burke.
Keep on turning that off. Is he's just stretched thin. So I appreciate everything and all the history, the planning board knowledge and the like that Stu brought to the table. He was representing the planning board, so I think alls we need to do, and he's already asked for it to be put on the agenda, is for them to come give us another name. And we will be coming to the council shortly in the next few months with with our proposed plan, our plan for consideration. So there's not actually a sunset, but we're supposed to have something to the council by early August and then we'll have to set a date for a hearing.
I believe it's August 1st. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor? None opposed? Okay, general business. Lieutenant Barbosa, discussion regarding request to enroll firefighters in the Rhode Island Temporary Disability Insurance Program.
Hello.
Lieutenant, thank you.
Good evening. I am Lieutenant Barbosa. I am the union president of the Tiverton Firefighters, Local 1703, and I simply come here just requesting that there's a resolution in meeting minutes approving the firefighters for TDI. Not making a long story, trying to get in touch with the Rhode Island Department of Labor and Training, few hours on hold, trying to get in touch with the right people, got in touch with someone. The last time it was updated, the TDI for Tiverton was 1978. And there was only three people on there. It is, or three municipalities. It is the Police Department, DPW, and I believe the Senior Center. That's what they have. And the the Fire Department is not a part of Tiverton according to the TDI Department. So this is way beyond what I'm asking. I think this might need to be like more of a kind of figure it out as we go along because I don't believe that anybody in Tiverton, any municipality, does have TDI. I know some people might have like AFLAC or something they do, but it's not much to the town, just payroll deduction. That's pretty much it.
Counselor, DiMediris.
So I understand that, I don't think anyone has it, to tell you the truth. I've never heard any of the the different unions having it. It is no cost to the town except for the payroll.
Yes.
Part of it. It's it's all the employee cost. If we do go forward with this though, this would have to be in the contract and would have to be in not open the contract, but make an amendment to the contract. Because I talked to Kim, Tim Cavassa, because I wanted to know if anyone, if he remembers anyone else having it. And he said, no. But he did suggest that we do it as an amendment that the town administrator and him and the union president get together, do the guidelines and then come forward to it. But once every, once we give it to the Fire Department, we have to keep in mind that the other unions may want it.
If I may, yes, ma'am. So I did speak with Lieutenant Barbosa today and I think what he's referencing, he's looking for just information. You know, at one point, 30 some years ago, the police department and the DPW might have been been involved in TDI, but going forward, you're correct, ma'am, that this would be, this would have to be townwide. So my recommendation to the council would be to authorize the town administrator to work with Lieutenant Barbosa so we can speak with the state. That would also include working with the treasurer, working with our labor council, working with the solicitor, to make a presentation to see if this is worthwhile. But knowing that if we do it for one entity, it is townwide. That would be my recommendation to you.
It would have to be an amendment to the present contracts so so that it comes.
Either that or we could do an MOU for the respective unions.
Right, right.
And I was just inquiring, asking about details and they wouldn't give me anything.
Well, I think they should look for.
They won't give me anything.
It's a good thing you did come.
Like even pricings, like how much do we have to pay into it, like things like, they wouldn't give me anything until I was affiliated with the town in their EIN number.
I think the the election has to be made by the town.
Yep.
Not by the employees. So and there is, go ahead, and the even though the cost is borne by the employee, there are, TDI has been expanded greatly in Rhode Island who's eligible and what you can take it for. So and again, I'm not your labor council, but I will, I will suggest that if somebody is is able to take TDI, especially when there's minimum man requirements, that does could could increase your overtime if someone's out on an illegal TDI.
And it would have to be through contracts? It couldn't be blanket through an ordinance of some type?
I, I'm not your labor council, but I'm assuming, I'm assuming that it would have to, the contract would have to be amended.
Mr. President, if I can make a motion?
This is actually not for discussions.
That's right. Correct. We have to put it on for.
Yeah, I did talk to Tim and he said the preferable way to do it is make amendments to the contract, not open it, just have a special.
Sounds like there's more work that needs to be done.
Yeah, a lot more.
I know we're meeting with the union and their labor council Wednesday, so that'll be a point of discussion.
Perfect, perfect. At some point.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thank you. I would just mention too, I mean, if you're looking at changing the contract, again, I'm not here to give you advice on how to negotiate against us, but
Please.
TDI is not, TDI is not exactly a rich benefit. And if temporary disability coverage is something that the department is interested in, you would be better off looking to get some sort of a private insurance through the next contract.
So this was kind of a step one. It was brought to my attention in a union meeting and there were members that were asking about it and I said, I'll look into it. And they said, this will be step one because I can't get any information until I'm affiliated with the town in your EIN number. So and I agree.
I mean, I think the annual maximum contribution by individual is something like $1,000, right? Low 1,200 bucks, something like that.
It's a thing. I don't know.
For the cost, again, and it's, it's a very, very basic program, but you know. My, my, again, me looking at for you guys as, you know, frontline workers, like I would be concerned about, you know, length of time if there was a disability, whether or not there's own occupation involved, right, which is what you would get through private insurance, meaning if you went out on disability and you could not be a firefighter anymore, then they would continue to pay in perpetuity. So a couple of things to think about.
Thank you.
And I do think before the council makes any decision, you really should talk to your labor council because you.
Correct.
Firefighters and police officers have injured on duty status, which guarantees their pay while they're out injured, which is the best kind of insurance you could have basically.
Well, we will continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Director Rogers, discussion impossible vote to award FY26 contracts for PVC and HDPE pipe to Ferguson Waterworks, catch basin frames and grates to Ferguson Waterworks, septic tank pumping to ACME Sanitation, onsite wastewater treatment system inspection to ACME Sanitary Services. Director Rogers seems pretty straightforward.
Yes, thank you. Were there any questions?
If there are no questions, I'd like a motion from the council to award these contracts.
I will make a motion to award the contracts as listed. This is annual, so it's kind of housekeeping.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor? None opposed? All right. Director Rogers, don't go anywhere. Update on Green Development Road Permit Closure slash Brayton Road Solar Projects. Mr. Director.
Thank you. The Green Development LLC has requested a DPW to review the closeout of the road opening permit for Brayton Road. Does anybody have any questions on that? I can read a little summary if people desire it.
I have just one. Mr. Director, are we satisfied from your end that they've fulfilled everything needed in order to meet the closure?
The bottom line is, it is the director, myself and the foreman have driven, reviewed, inspected the road multiple times, most recently as a final inspection today. The road work is deemed acceptable and DPW proposes to close out the permit and inform Green Development LLC of such.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? All right. Thank you, Director.
Thank you all.
Next up, Administrator Jones, discussion impossible vote to approve 10 six-foot concrete rectangular universal access picnic tables for use at Fogland and Grinnell's Beach not to exceed $20,000 from municipal capital fund 640.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as you know, this might be familiar to most of the council. This is just formalizing where I can take the money from. So if you have any questions, please let me know because I know it was a bit ambiguous the last time, but in speaking with the treasurer, this would come out of the municipal capital budget not to exceed $20,000 so we can process this payment.
Yeah, seems pretty straightforward. I'd like a motion to approve the utilization of not to exceed $20,000 for municipal capital fund 640 for the concrete picnic tables. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Counselor Paul. Discussion impossible vote to remove concrete barriers from Fogland Beach. For those watching at home, when you go down Fogland Beach, these are on the right-hand side where the old swing set used to be. Counselor Paul.
So, Mr. President, in stopping down at Fogland to observe the beach rake demonstration, I had noticed that once again, the blocks have appeared blocking off the road that goes up to the north marsh swimming area, cog area, clamming area over at Fogland. I had spoken to the administrator about it as far as getting those removed. He had reached out to a variety of people to find out why they are there. We got an explanation in our backup. I did also receive and I did distribute four emails in addition to calls, but we'll take the emails for their word, that we have constituents that are concerned about this, that are elderly, that go back there and they clam. It's been something they've been doing for 10, 15 plus years and now their access is completely cut off. My personal opinion, I've been going down there for 15 years. That road has not changed one bit. There has been zero erosion that I have noticed. As far as maintenance goes, it's stones and sand. You could put maybe eight to 10 cars back, five to eight cars in the cul-de-sac area in the back. I would like to see that those blocks either have a good explanation or get removed. I'm looking at the backup here and the backup says CRMC, CRMC, CRMC. They report, they report. I don't see anything from CRMC and I don't know what their authority and jurisdiction is over that road.
Any questions from the council or Counselor Paul, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that the blocks be removed. And I could also add to that, I suppose, that if there is a concern in the back area, then to maybe put a sign for a limit of vehicles, if that's a, I would say a limit of six vehicles. I think that's all you're putting back there anyway.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Discussion.
Counselor Janik.
I'm just, just wondering why those blocks were put there in the first place? Who put them there and why and when?
So, so thank you. When I became the administrator back in December, at the beginning of the year, I had a conversation with Open Space, with Mr. James, about, I guess, at one point, the council did authorize that this area be blocked. I believed it was during COVID. So you have to forgive me because a lot of this information came from Mr. James. Then the blocks were removed and from what I, and from how he explained it to me, they were supposed to be put back to preserve that area and it was just never done by the former administration, former council. So and also DPW would not take Open Space's direction as they shouldn't without coming through the administrator and the council. So given the history, I directed the DPW director to restrict the vehicle access to that portion. I have spoken with the vice president about this and I did also reach out to Mr. James just so he could have an opportunity to speak to the council and he supplied that backup. This is a policy decision by the council. You direct me on what you want to do. I know the backup is there. This is not, and just to be clear and for the public, this is not restricting access to the beach. It is restricting vehicle access. However, if it is, and given the vice president's explanation, if you want to allow vehicles there, it is your discretion. And if you so choose to do that and vote in that manner, then I will direct the DPW director to remove the blocks that are there and we can put up signage if you so direct me as well.
I know, I know Mr. James is here, Brian. I hate to pull you in, but I understand. If you want to come up here, but I understand it had a lot to do with preserving that area and that saved the bay and Open Space had concerns about that area and the vehicles in that area.
Yeah, there's been discussions.
Sorry, not name an address for the record, please.
Brian James, 286 to Power Ave. As I said in the the backup document, there's been discussions ongoing for.
Long time.
10 or more years. And there's been different parties involved that were responsible for the area. And conservation discussed that a number of times. They wanted to get it closed. They were interfacing with CRMC. And so I spoke to the chair of conservation to get that history. And then in 2018, the management of that area was moved over to Open Space.
Right. So so who actually controls that area?
So now Open Space is responsible for the whole conservation area, which is everything to the north and east of the road, of the paved road. And then recreation is responsible for the beach side.
I have a follow-up question for you then.
Yeah.
If I go all the way down Fogland, take a right.
Yeah.
All the way out, out and around the back.
Yeah.
Is your contention that that is Open Space that has control over that area as well?
If that, actually, the ordinance references, I believe it was a 2010 survey, which, so the tip of that would be, but the the road going north, once you get out to the end where it turns, is Three Rod Way. So Three Rod Way crosses the beach and then does a 90-degree turn to the north. Actually, north and south.
Yeah, so when you get to the end of Three Rod.
There's a little stub at the end.
When you get to the end of Three Rod, right, Three Rod Way, you can actually continue along and pull out on the beach.
Yeah.
And so once you take the right off of Three Rod Way, would that also be considered?
I believe that that spit, once you come off of Three Rod Way, is part of the conservation area.
Here's my concern, and I think it's a very important one. We heard from numerous people about beach access as it related to fishing. I mean, there was testimony. Some people even described, you know, the Old Stone Bridge as a fishing pier. My concern is that that's, we've solved that issue at Grinnell's. It feels like we're opening ourselves up to now creating the same problem and restricting access down in Fogland. And a follow-on point to that, I mean, again, I grew up in this town. I used to drive down there, drive all the way out, around, it's a little roundabout. There used to be a couple of picnic tables over there. It was a great area. And now you don't even know that it's down there because we've got blocks and it seems like the dunes are falling slightly into the road. Obviously, there is a roadway there. There's stone rocks holding up the dunes on either side. So my concern is about actively restricting access.
You can walk down there.
Yes.
It's just vehicle access. That's all. So people can park it at the beach and walk down there.
Yeah, or another, I'm not sure exactly the distance, but a short distance up the road, you can park on the beach and walk straight across the road into the water there, into the cove, because there is a cut through the, oop, sorry.
Careful.
Cut through the major dunes there. I didn't realize this. Conservation told me that the rocks were placed. the rocks were placed because of the CRMC complaint, because before that, cars were parking all the way up the roadway.
But you're not in your head, he means the rocks that are lining it.
Yeah, I know.
So, they took care of the issue about parking on the sides of the road. That's been resolved. And even at the end, there's a cul-de-sac with rocks. I know some people from the protocol want to speak too, but to follow up on a question that the council, the council president had, you're saying that you control the end of that tip. This is clearly a road. It's clearly got boulders. There's not much of an issue for even a low-profile vehicle yet to get down there. But to drive down the very end of that road, take that right and go out into that point, you're literally driving on beach. You're driving on areas that have sensitive grasses and, my question is, are we not closing that because that's where the windsail is going, that the windsurf is going?
No. That's the windsurfer area, yeah.
Isn't that just as much of a concern?
It was last year when the piping plovers nested there, but it's mostly gravel. It's not
I've driven down there with my four-wheel-drive vehicle and almost gotten stuck. It's not safe. This is a lot safer.
Yeah. I wouldn't argue with that. And it shifts around, given the storms.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Burke.
So, Brian, just to reference the second page of what you provided, in 2019, the Open Space Commission voted unanimously to request that the cul-de-sac be blocked to vehicles, correct?
Did it what?
That it be blocked to vehicles.
Yes.
And that stands.
Yeah. Well, that's what started the process of trying to get the request.
So, I suggest we follow the recommendation of the Open Space Commission, keep those blocks in place.
If it's a matter of having come to the council, I was never told that, so we, you know, manage it, made a decision, just like we do with entrance to Edema Woods and parking and things like that.
So, follow-on question then, since this supposedly goes back to 2019, when the Conservation Commission made this decision, and on, I'll tell you the exact date, August 26th of 2022, I drove down there, and the blocks were there. The blocks were not there. I drove down, pulled around, parked my truck. So, I'm confused as to why the original genesis of this was to prevent cars from going down there because we all had to worry about how close the vehicles were together and keeping spacing because of COVID, to now the discussion has shifted and the blocks were arbitrarily placed back there without coming to the council for an affirmative policy. Because again, I've sat on the prior council. They weren't there in 2022, and now here we are in this council, and the only reason we found out about this is because some people called up the vice chair, and he took it upon himself to go down there with the administrator to check it out.
And that, as I said at the end of that summary, we had been requesting it for six years and getting verbal approvals that it would happen.
I don't remember it being taken out because of COVID, though. If any, I don't know why those were taken away. I don't remember it was because of COVID.
My memory at the time, because we were putting silly parking spaces to keep the cars separate from each other because they were afraid the cars were going to catch COVID. That's when that parking area was shut down because the cars were too close.
Here's my point, and I know Counselor Komito wants to say something as well, but if, if this is, if this is a policy decision of the council, and the prior council never took it up, and this council hasn't taken it up, what concerns me is that a board or commission just took it upon themselves to go and do something when it's clearly a policy decision that the council holds. That should be an agenda item for us to discuss and give you in the affirmative. So, ultimately, we, the council, don't control the boards or commissions. It's that gentleman right there. All boards and commissions report to him. So, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Administrator, you were unaware that this had been done until this came up?
Correct, because it had been.
Okay.
But then you put them there.
I did. I did.
All right.
Because there was an understanding that it could have been in front of the council, but that was unclear whether there was a definitive decision made years ago. And as the council knows, I'm the sixth town administrator in seven years. So, there, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts here. So, I don't think there was anything done nefariously. There wasn't done anything by the Open Space Commission.
That would suggest that this was done just to do it or restrict access. This, I looked upon it as this was a policy decision that was made that was never executed. So, now it is in front of you, as I stated before, for your consideration and guidance.
And every time since 2019 that I've brought it up to an administrator, they've said, "Yeah, sure, that should happen," without any instruction that it needed to come to council.
So, are these pictures that we're looking at tonight, these current pictures, are these, the way the road sits right now and the condition that it's in?
I took these the day of the agenda meeting.
Okay. So, what I'm looking at here is, obviously, you can see the blocks and the signage, but I'm looking at a road that seems like it's in excellent shape, right? I'm also seeing the barriers, these rocks that are stopping people from getting into the grassy areas and protect the dune area. And I'm not sure if the birds migrate in that area, but it looks like they have protection with these rocks being placed. The second thing about this road that I have experience with in my time as a firefighter in Tiverton, I've had at least three cardiac arrests down in this little cul-de-sac area that we're talking about, and vehicle for emergency access down there, to me, is very important on a safety standpoint. When you get down there, you've got to cross a little stream to get out to the, right out to the water, and depending on how the water's flowing, that's, you're either walking across that. So, for the firefighters to carry their equipment all the way out to that point, if something does go wrong, it'd be a very difficult task being part of that. I would like to see, if possible, to see what happens this summer. Remove the blocks, give it a trial period, see if we're creating damage, see if, you know, we have this CSO program going, right? They can monitor this and give it a shot to see what happens if we leave this open. If we find that it's a nuisance, if we find people back there hiding, pottying, trashing the place, driving their vehicles through the dunes, then I think we take some corrective action. To me, this area is no different than going all the way out to the point. And if you've ever been out to the point on a weekend, there are several windsurfers out there, and they set up for the weekend just about, right? So, they're bringing their vans, they're bringing campers, they're bringing grills, stoves. So, I would at least like to give this a shot because I think the way this is set up now, if you're going to drive in the grassy areas, you're going to cause a lot of damage to your vehicles. So, I would like to try it, maybe our CSO, so we can have the police chief, see if they can put that in part of their patrol, give us a report, damages, no damages, and take it from there and try it and see where it goes. And if we find that they're damaging the open space, then like everything else, we ruin it for ourselves, and we shut it down to vehicle traffic, and we go back to walking in. Or we put a chain so the fire department can have access, if it gets that bad, so the fire department can have access to get their vehicle down there if need be in an emergency. So, that's my, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor.
As well, something to change or dig situation if that was needed. And to your point about the emergency access, that's why when Open Space first voted this and asked me to relay it, I went to the fire chief, who was in favor of closing it off at the time, that, the fire chief at the time.
No disrespect, but he doesn't carry the equipment to get down there.
Counselor Komito, it's funny because in this letter here, there's a comment, the fire chief noted that his staff had gotten into arguments with people whose cars were blocking the road, which is one of the reasons why I had said, maybe a limit with a sign. But as we discussed with several things, we don't have a, let's restrict stuff issue. We have an enforcement issue in this town, right? The beach stuff, I mean, the fishing stuff, DEM doesn't want to come into town, you know? Littering on the beach, cameras. We have an enforcement issue.
Any other, any other discussion from the council? Counselor Burke?
I just want to bring to our attention again, Mr. James's letter, the second full paragraph on the second page, Staff from Save the Bay, which is the premier nonprofit in the state that we all, I think, recognize has done a wonderful job of helping to protect our waterways and our salt marshes and the like. Began efforts to improve the health of the salt marsh complex bisected by the cul-de-sac road. If you notice, there's that little bridge now too going over that was helping to take out some of that water hazard, if you will. That was there. They pointed out that the roadbed increases impoundment of fresh water on the marsh, resulting in damage to the health of the salt marsh. Their efforts across Tiverton have concentrated on making cuts to existing salt marshes. They supported the idea of restricting access by vehicles. So, I'm not sure how, and I appreciate your suggestion, I'm not sure how we're going to measure in a summer the effects on the salt marsh by having vehicles go up and down that. There may be a way. I just don't know.
I don't know either.
And I think we would have to measure that.
Counselor Burke, with no disrespect to those organizations, did you expect anything different from them? Because as a governing body, we sat here and we want to restrict fishing.
I respect the firefighter giving me an opinion, so I certainly respect Save the Bay giving me an opinion around salt water.
All I'm saying is, would you expect a different recommendation from them?
I just answered.
So, Counselor Janet, can you?
I just had a question about this area that's blocked off now. Is that the area that the cars are having difficulty in having to be towed out of? That is not.
DPW periodically has to bring the front-end loader through there because the sand moves so much down there that it builds back in. I don't know if, if you, off the top of your head, have any idea how often, once a year, twice a year?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Well, again, you know, the correct, the sand does move, and organizations have gone down on the beach side, you know, plant dune grass and the rest of it, because if we get a, we get a nice, you know, summer storm, half the Fogland Beach comes up and is on the road, so.
They already see the trees.
Yeah.
The Christmas trees are already showing.
Yep. By the way, just to address Counselor Burke's point, having, as somebody who lives very close to a salt marsh, they expand and they expand quickly. Ground settles, next thing you know, you have all sorts of wetlands species creeping up. So, I don't know to what extent that salt marsh, if we close the road, would wind up becoming significantly bigger or what the outcomes would be.
I think it's about contamination.
So, in any case, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Would you like to speak? By all means. We're inclusive here at the Tiverton Town Council.
I'm not good at this, so.
Just name an address.
Yanfory, 137 High Hill Road. Just a quick, I am fortunate enough that I have access to the waterfront personally. I have access to step there. I don't need this access point, but, and I am a major tree hugger. I have Open Space Committee. I've made land trust agreements, so I'm probably a tree hugger, you call me. And I moved to Tiverton about five years ago, and I was blessed to move into a neighborhood where some, this gentleman in particular, but some gentleman, I hate, don't get in trouble, but a little bit older than me, took me under their wing and showed me how to go clamming and showed me how to go fishing. Other gentleman's not here, and actually welcomed me into a community that now I am fully entrenched in. Without saying a name, there's one or two gentlemen in particular that cannot now clam because that is their way to get there, and they don't have the physical ability to get there. They've been doing this for years, and they're part of our community. And someday, I will probably be that same person. I care about the environment, and I think restrictions, five vehicles, I don't have that number. I totally agree with that. But restriction to cut off something that is so very important to our community is very distressing to me. And yes, the Conservation Committee, which I sat on for years in another community, is very important, but we used to have to remind ourselves when I was with Save the Bay. I had to remind myself when I was with Preserve Fortress, when I was with all these committees. We always went back and said, "We are advisory committees, and we are looking at this from a very important perspective, but we can't forget the whole perspective." So, I would ask each and every one of you, yes, respect every single committee that comes in here as an advisory opinion. I agree with that, and sometimes you're going to follow them to the T, and I respect that. But I would also say, please broaden your scope and understand that they're advising you, but there are other perspectives and not to limit it. So, I don't know if that helps at all. That's just my personal take, and I very much appreciate tree huggers, if you don't mind me saying that, and other perspectives. I just also, I've experienced something that's very special to me. We weren't going to stay here. It was a, we'll try this out for a year, kind of a joke, and we not only stay here, but we have friends are moving here. So, thank you for inviting us to the community.
Thank you. All right. So, motion made and seconded.
I'm Gail Lawrence. I live on Long Pasture Way. I overlook the Sepalit Marsh, and that is one of the most dynamic ecosystems we have in this community, and is vitally important not just to you and I, but to everyone who lives on this planet. And if you aren't paying attention to sea level rise, to the erosion of beaches, and changes to the migratory bird status, the people who are working tirelessly trying to save species like the plover, their own time, their volunteer effort, you are missing, I think, an important part of what's happening in our world. And we are in a unique place to preserve the last remaining parcels of in contiguous coastal marshways. Marshlands are not wastelands, and I understand about people having access, but if you want to have marshlands in the future, you need to protect them today, and maybe you needed to protect them more earlier. So, I think, with respect to you, Mr. Paul, because I understand that you've collected information and you've given a lot of thought to this, I think we have to make a balance between access for all and protecting the sensitive environment that is represented by the area that the Open Space Commission, the Save the Bay members, have decided is worth protecting. And you have an opportunity to do that, or you have an opportunity to let vehicles go in there, and I think that that's imprudent. So, that's my piece, and I know I'm not on the agenda, but that's from my heart.
Thank you.
Wait, I've got to turn my badge over.
Counselor Komito.
Would Counselor Paul?
If you'd like to say something, by all means.
Bertwell at Two-Shore Road. I'm the one that contacted council and hear about, about the access to the road. I mean, I'm 74 years old, and the six or seven gentlemen in my neighborhood that are in their 70s, they love to go clamming. It's, it's, it's an outing for us in, in the spring and the fall. I'll bet in the 13 years I've been going there, I haven't seen more than two or three cars there at one time, and we go two or three times a week. So, it's not overloaded. It's not destroying anything. These are gentlemen that sit there and clam and enjoy their day. It's very difficult to park where we need to park across the street where the bathhouses are, get your rake, get your clam bucket, get your cooler, get everything else you need, worry about whether you put the keys to your car, your wallet that you have to bring with you.
What is in the
Haul it all the way down the road, all right? Clam for two hours, turn around, walk all the way back. I mean, it's, it's a hardship, and I don't think it's necessary. I do appreciate your concern in this matter. Thank you very much.
Counselor Komito.
Counselor Paul, would you be willing to change your motion to maybe do a trial run to for the summer and get some more data and see what takes, transpire and takes place? Leave it open and just, so we can just have the data and just say, "Hey, you are right. This didn't cause any damage. Let's leave it open." Or, yes, they went over the rocks, they're in the dunes, they're wrecking the salt marsh. I mean, I
I will say this.
Counselor.
Again, 15-plus years I've been going back there with zero issue. As far as sea roses, there are millions, if not billions, of sea rose plants back there. They're everywhere. The other thing I haven't brought up, you had mentioned safety and cardiac arrests back there. That area is extremely popular in the summertime with That area is extremely popular in the summertime with families with young children because on low tide, you can walk 200 yards out and you're up to your knees. I've gone back there and seen several families with young kids, just in little groups and doing their thing. Some of them park, some of them walk, but I've also never seen more than four, five, six vehicles back there either. I don't think that, I wouldn't even say a trial period. Any council can come back down the road and say, nope, we want to block it, show me the proof. Like I mentioned here, there's mention of CRMC, there's mention of several other groups that have monitored and watched this area up until open space. I don't see anything from CRMC or telling me, here's the recommendation. I don't see anything from Save the Bay saying, here's our recommendation. I see, I don't see anything. So my recommendation would be to remove the blocks, have it monitored. I would love to see a parking sign back there, maybe no more than five vehicles. Control it a little bit better that way.
All right. I think we've belabored this point, so.
If I do not support the motion, can I get in the motion? Correct.
Right. You said.
So the motion on the floor is to remove the blocks. Seconded by, I'm sorry?
And limit to six vehicles.
And limit to six vehicles. Seconded by Counselor Perry. All those in favor? If you'd like to make a second motion.
I would like to make a second motion. I totally agree with access and keeping the beach open, right? But, so this, this whole debate since 2019, going back forever, it's not that I don't trust your words, Counselor Paul, but I just think for the, for this, for everybody's sense of mind, I just think we, I'd like to make a motion to remove the blocks, monitor this summer, see how it goes and, and take it from there. Make a, make an informed decision at the end of the summer. Yes, there were no issues. Yes, there was only three cars. Let's collect the data and information and then nobody can come back and say, well, we just did this half-heartedly, like we're open, we're monitoring it, we're looking at it and take it from there.
I'd support that.
I would like to make a motion to temporarily remove the block, the blockade, open it to traffic. And if we want to put a stipulation on a number of cars, which I don't really think makes a difference because nobody's going to enforce how many cars are parked down there because we can't. So I'm just saying, open it, monitor it and we, and let's watch the road, let's watch the marsh and see if it gets destroyed. I personally don't think it's gone, but I just think we give everybody a peace of mind that way.
All right. So Counselor Paul, the end date would be?
So the difference in the motions is, open it and monitor it, open it.
No, the difference in the motion is remove, remove the blocks versus remove the blocks temporarily. So and your end date for this removal of the blocks would be?
I mean, I would go to, I don't know when the end.
To the beach closes, yes.
Until we don't have enforcement there as well. And also to the counselors, if you mandate that there are six cars parked there and there's a seventh, that is a violation of your mandate.
Which one do you tell?
The seventh car.
How do you know what to say with what end date?
Well, if there's six cars in there, sir, and there's a seventh car that parks there, the seventh car is a violation.
Well, you have to witness it.
Okay. So motion been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Perry.
My motion.
My next agenda is going to be the point and then we'll deal with that.
Okay. Counselor Burke.
What are our measures for success or lack of success? Because I don't think, I'm not in disagreement necessarily, but I think we have to have clear measures because just observing whether or not the road has changed, to me is not a measure. I want to measure what effect it has on the salt marsh and I don't know that we have identified what that measure would be.
Well, I don't think we can get that measure unless we start hiring experts to come in and monitor the salt marsh. So this to me is just a simple, if we're abusing the area, we're causing damage, it's common sense to me. If we're abusing the area, we're causing damage to the salt marsh and that's, that's what I'm looking at. If the road is clean, we have these big boulders, if they're moving boulders to get into the salt marsh, if the area is cut and dried to the cul-de-sac, if we go beyond that, then we're causing damage. If we stay on the road, we're not causing damage. That's how I look at it.
Counselor Burke.
So who's, who's measuring it? So even with what you're describing, how are we documenting it? Who's measuring it? And who's coming back to us with the recommendation?
So.
With all due respect, I asked for documentation on closing it and we didn't, we weren't given any.
I just asked the question.
So I would propose that either with the town administrator's help, either we talk to the CSO program and they do reports, or we can have our highway department, once a month or every two weeks, go down, take a peek and see if we're creating damage, if there's trash. I think it's, I don't know, I think it's fairly simple to document, especially with the CSO officers. They can drive in there, check the beach, do a little loop in the, in the cul-de-sac, pull out and notice any damage or destruction or trash.
I would suggest, Counselor Camino, that the burden of proof be on whomever is making the recommendation that we close it off. Meaning, if you're to drive down Fogland Road when you take the first right, you're closer to the salt marsh on that road than you are if you go to the cul-de-sac that we're proposing opening up.
The only reason they put that roadway in there is, there's houses on the side of that road.
Let's just move the motion.
All right. So motion been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? All right.
I have a question.
I just want to have some clarification on the next one. Is it the duplicate F and G?
I think it was probably there.
Okay. So next item on the agenda is discussion impossible vote to approve resolution 2025-0024 appropriating funds from Fund 650 Casino Special Revenue Fund for the casino or for the school FY26 capital in a request of $312,605. We discussed this at the last meeting, but did not take any votes. You have in front of you what the 312, 605 is and then there were additional items that could in theory be considered capital. Leave it to the council to motion to approve the resolution or alter it.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the resolution as it is stated and shown in front of us for the total amount of 312, 605.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Counselor Burke.
Is Brendan, may I ask you some, may I ask Brendan some questions?
One for me, too.
So I spoke with a few superintendents who I know or former superintendents and when we last discussed this, and I understand you're looking out over three years, but there are items on here, specifically, I understand they're electronic. Thank you, sir. That they were clear that these items are not capital items, textbooks, library books. I don't know exactly what, I forget what you're doing with Z-Space and Pearson, Shy, iXL and AI Bris. Can you remind me what those are?
So those, most of those textbooks are e-text, not textbooks.
I know.
So I would disagree with those superintendents. Anything, as we discussed last meeting, anything over really 12 months is a capital item. That's IRS code, no one can fight that one. As far as AI Bris, that's a AI learning tool for teachers and students. Obviously, AI is the new way of life, like it or not, unfortunately. I'm a dis, disappointed against it, but that's the way of life and that's the way leading technology is going and it's presented by Riot as well. That's one of their vendors of choice. What was the other question?
What are you getting from Z-Space, Pearson, Shy, iXL?
Z-Space is the robotic, the robotic, basically 3D glasses, you're looking at different things, dissecting a mouse, doing robotics and CTE, very visual things. Dr. Sanchioni actually just did a presentation at the renowned superintendent meeting over Z-Space with the one, Tiverton's one of the original schools to take action with and it's very, been very well received, obviously with a high cost, though. Pearson, that's for our homeschooled students. So that's basically, that's kind of a no-brainer because we're getting the per pupil cost of Riot by having those homeschooled individuals.
What does it provide from them?
That's their software, their home software. Yep.
Shy?
Shy, that's the Google and, Google and Microsoft domain. So that's all the domains to run Google, which is our email and Microsoft 365.
And iXL Math?
iXL Math is a, it's a high-attentive math software that serves fourth grade, fifth grade, for either fourth or fifth through 12th.
Okay. And I just, Mr. President, reiterate my concern. So actually, I mean, so I'll frame it this way. When we pulled things out of operations last year, that included many similar types of things.
Similar, yes.
We were very clear that we were doing that as a one-time thing to help you get over a hump. My concern is you came back to us, you, not the schools, came back to us this year, assuming that this would be provided again from casino money automatically. Is it going to happen again next year?
Hopefully not, but as I said last meeting, I, this is definitely something to get away with. However, at the same time, this would be our number one capital request if this was a capital meeting per se, you know, most of these items.
We won't be asking for anything else.
We will, but for next year or this year?
As part of your budget process.
Hopefully we eventually, my, my opinion is I would like to get away from this. However, as you guys know, we've had a tough FY25 and, and it's going to be another tough FY26 with the amount of layoffs we had.
Thank you. Counselor Janet.
So I know that, that you've talked to people and they didn't feel that was capital, but I'm going to just suggest that maybe we kind of keep an open mind and kind of redefine what capital is. Looking at some of these things, even in the bottom, which was excluded, these multi-year usages, I am of, where I work, if we put in something like that, you know, it costs 500 for one year and if you do it for three years, it's like 1,200, you save some money, that we can put those into capital and it may just be a way of looking at things. Some of the counselors and myself sat at the graduation on last Friday and we were really modeling it all, the students who had CTE. I don't remember that being that in the past or if it just wasn't documented on the, the agenda, but some of these items for CTE, we were saying, we really need to expand that. It needs to be a marketing tool for us. Our attendance is, not the attendance, but the student census has declined. How do we get that back again? You know, maybe there are not as many students in town, but can we pull in from other towns if we have great CTE programs? And the only way we can get that is if we invest in that, so.
If you don't mind, I like you, you bring up a good point, even though enrollment's declining, CTE is increasing. So you bring up a very good point.
Do you have like a percentage? Because there seemed like a lot of, of students and I meant to sit and count it.
That was my first graduation since I graduated, but, so I don't, but it was quite a few.
It just looked like, it was quite, quite.
Probably at least 30, if not 40.
Yeah, it was quite a few.
Some.
And CTE is huge.
But I just, I think that we just need to keep an open mind. We also did not have any of the building meetings this year. We did not put any capital in for, for meetings and I get, we don't want to do this operationally and get into trouble next year, but we have not spent any of the capital money on, last year we did the big gym renovation with the locker rooms and then prior to that, it was bathrooms and other structures, but we have not done that in an entire year. So we do have that, you know, that to look forward to next year. But if we can get some of these things out of the way this year.
Yeah, that would be appreciated because we don't have much, there's not much more to request from capital. Obviously, you guys have the right to say yes or no, but right now, we haven't gone through it fully with the school committee, but between what the administration has gone through, it's not much dollar amount wise.
Counselor Perry.
You really want me to speak?
You looked like you wanted to, wanted to say something, Counselor.
Well, I think everyone knows how I feel about schools. Don't smile.
I need to make you laugh.
Brendan, you're in a very tough position and I appreciate everything that you do. I really do. And you're the guy who has to keep coming and ask for money because of the situation that you were put in. But I'll just say one thing and this was very interesting. We went to the award ceremony the other night and I spoke to quite a few teachers and it was amazing. One teacher said, "Mr. Perry, I follow you on a council." And she said, "I really appreciate what you do." She said, "But I'm going to tell you something." She said, "Giving money to the school is like giving a bottle of gin to an alcoholic." And I said, "What?" And I said, "Oh, my God, coming from a teacher." I thought that was pretty good. I didn't want to believe her, but when that, when that comes from a teacher, you know that there's.
Well, you've got to remember, sometimes in a workforce, you've got your positives and negatives.
There's more behind it. So I wish you all the luck with your new superintendent and I hope that we can work together in a more efficient way in the next coming year and that you're not coming and asking for more money.
Appreciate that.
But you're in a tough position, I know you are.
All right. I have one question. Mr. Andrew, given the budget resolution as it sits today, if these items were not to be paid for out of capital, what would be your recourse? Meaning, would you be able to cut in your existing budget in order to plug the gap for some necessary items?
No.
So in essence, the situation that we, the council, find ourselves in because of the way laws in the state of Rhode Island work is if we don't approve these dollars, we are knowingly putting the school into a deficit for next fiscal year.
Not if they cut.
That would be the question. If they're, they can't, they can't cut any more staff for next year because they have until June 1st to pink slip anybody they were going to cut.
Same with TAs.
That's my concern.
Yeah, you could reduce them, or you could.
You could go for one year for textbooks. You could get fewer Chromebooks.
So we, so yes and no. It'd be difficult to not give a student a work-in Chromebook or a mandated textbook. Most of these texts, e-texts are mandated through the state, like that's the US, for instance, for example, one of them is US history. That's the US history Riot governed curriculum for history from middle school and high school. So by not.
I didn't say not.
Yeah, yeah.
Reduce from three years to one year.
Correct, we could, yes, absolutely. Sorry, Mr. Burke, yes. So those are on there as an ROI of saving money, but yes, you are correct, we could get a reduced rate by going over one year instead of three. Again, just the ROI is there for the, the later years.
All right. Counselor Paul, I'd like to ask that you amend your motion to correct the resolution to reflect that I'm actually the fifth, not the fourth, and that today's date is June 9th, 2025. You open that amendment?
Sure.
All right. My father's the fourth.
I know.
He's not here. Okay.
It's a V?
It's a V, yes. Strike the I in front of the V. Any further discussion from the council? If not, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor? Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor Perry. Opposed? Next item, Counselor Camino, discussion impossible vote on amendments to Chapter 42, Article 2, open burning and approve funds to advertise public hearing. Counselor Camino.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I placed this on the agenda. In the last few weeks, I've received several phone calls of people trying to remove, remove yard waste from their, from their, from their yards, obviously. With the burning on us, that got put in place, burning can basically no longer take place all summer long, leaving a problem for some people trying to clean their yards. I don't really want to change the ordinance at this time. All, all I'm asking to do is to suspend the burning of yard waste.
I don't really want to change the ordinance at this time, all I'm asking to do is to suspend the burning of yard waste. We could put a timeframe on it, or I would like to see it held so we can burn until we have a transfer, yard waste transfer station put in place. So right now, residents don't have any place to bring their yard waste, they're accumulating stuff in the yard. A lot of people would like to clean their yards, and in easy ways, burning their leaves, their sticks. I've also come to the conclusion that we can't pick up yard waste a couple of times, I believe it's a month. You could put them in the bags, highway department comes out when you get your trash. But some of the problems with that is that some of these yards are just way too big to be filling those bags, and it's just causing problems, so I would just like to.
So, if I may interject, Counselor?
Sure.
We would need to advertise, to, advertise to make amendments to, that even if it was a temporary suspension with an end date, we still need to advertise.
I thought our discussion was that if we didn't change the ordinance and we chose not to, I thought through the solicitor in your conversation with me, was we could just not enforce what is the ordinance is right now.
So if we were going to go forward and make the alterations, we still would have to advertise to amend?
Not amend anything, I'm just don't want to enforce.
Yes, but even that, a temporary, a temporary hold on enforcement with a specific end date would still be, we'd have to write that into the amendment.
Because even, I think, even if we chose not to enforce, if somebody is burning their yard waste without a temporary amendment, and their neighbor files a complaint, we have to act on that complaint because it's still the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, so what I'm trying to do is, when I say not enforce, follow the laws that are here, but allow, like, so you still have to go to the fire department, you still have to get a permit, you still have to follow the rules and regulations, you're 25 feet, you're whatever. What I want to do is allow people to burn, and if that's the case where, I guess I either misunderstood what you had told me about our conversation, your conversation.
I probably conveyed it incorrectly to you, so.
Either way, if that's the case, then I have spoken with the fire department, and they would like to make major changes to the ordinance. And if we have to advertise, then I may as well give them the opportunity to make the changes, speaking with the deputy chief, to control it better, and allow people to burn and get rid of the yard waste. So I guess my ask tonight is kind of a mute point, if we can't just not enforce like I thought we could do.
So, in that instance, again, if there's amendable, if the council's amendable, I would suggest that we have a motion to, I guess, advertise that we're going to make changes to the burning ordinance?
We need to know what those changes are first.
I'll work with the fire department.
I mean, a quick change, if you wanted to strike the prohibition, you just strike the second sentence of A1. No permits may be issued between May 1st and September 30th of any calendar year, we can strike that temporarily, we can strike it, and then that would allow you to be permitting any 12 months out of the year, you still have to get a permit, however.
You could do it that way, I would like to do it that way.
Yeah, then we can wait, I will tell you that, you weren't on the council, but the previous council, we spent months on this ordinance, so, but I understand it might be changes.
So I can also tell you that I was the acting chief when that ordinance went through, I didn't agree with it then, but I was overruled with the previous administrator and the councilperson.
That's fine, I'm just telling you.
Kind of took it off my table when I was the acting fire chief.
And now you get to make those decisions.
Exactly, well, I want to do what's right for the people.
So, make a suggestive motion here that we advertise a public hearing for a modification to, a temporary amendment to Article 2, Open Burning, Section.
A1.
4234, A1, to strike, no permits may be issued between May 1st and September 30th of any calendar year, and replace it with, no, 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 not to strike that, to add after calendar year, with the exception of the May 1st, September 30th, to September 30th of 2025, which would give us time, that's what you were saying, wasn't it?
No, I suggested we strike, no permits may be issued between May 1st and September 30th of any calendar year. That means you can get a permit 12 months out of the year.
Right, which is what I said, the first one I said.
That's, that would take care of that, and if you want a sunset, this, that amendment would be, you know, for, could expire at such and such a date.
Okay, which is what I was trying to get at.
I think maybe we.
Second.
Could we essentially just add language that says that the fire department's permitted to suspend the ordinance as they see fit?
That's too much discretion giving to the fire department.
They just don't issue, they just don't issue the permits if that's, if that's, if it's too dry, we're in a drought, they wouldn't issue permits.
Yeah, I think it should be all year round, if they issue permits.
That's what we did, with that, with the amendment that Mike and the councilman Camino disagreed.
I was trying to get to what Mike was saying.
You said it backwards.
No, I struck it, and then I was trying to put a timeframe on it.
I was a little bit more efficient.
Yeah, a timeframe on it, yeah.
I did it a little bit more efficiently, did you? I guess, when would you like this to sunset, I guess is the question.
Forever?
So, wait a minute, I think I get the sense that most members want to do what was suggested, that it's up to the discretion of the fire chief or the fire marshal.
Which is controlled by the permit process.
Right. So then we strike that, period.
And they can just burn whatever they want as long as they get a permit. There is value in getting a permit, obviously.
Right.
Because if it is a dry season, you don't want somebody burning their grass.
So, I, I mean, that's the way I would want it, and I think the fire department kind of wants it the same way. But they want to put regulations in, they want to have, they want to limit it, when they redo their ordinance, just some of the ideas they have. So if you're going to clean your yard, they don't want, like, they're going to limit maybe the number of times you can get a permit. They have a new software in place that they can track everything, so they have some, they have some great ideas. I was just trying to get this through, so in the meantime, because we don't have a transfer station for yard waste, to let people burn and clean their yards. So I don't mind a sunset or something to that effect, or if we just keep this open, and then let the fire department come back and redo their burning ordinance.
This ordinance already allows the department, as written, to issue guidelines for the issuance of their permit, that's the third sentence of this, so they haven't done that, but they could.
Yeah, the only thing is that May 30th.
The only restriction on this ordinance is the fact that you can't, they were prohibited from issuing a permit from those periods. Right, we strike that, they can issue permits.
Very good.
And they can put guidelines.
So, your motion was to strike?
My motion is to strike that sentence in A1, whatever, 42, whatever. No permits may be issued between May 1st and September 30th of any calendar year, period.
Okay, and I seconded that. Any further discussion?
And this is to advertise.
This is to advertise. All those in favor? None opposed. All right, next item on the agenda is discussion and possible vote to schedule and advertise proposed code of ordinance zoning amendments to include Article 2 definitions, add definition for C and D processing facility, it's just as written, this is a long paragraph.
I'll just go through this quickly, so I don't want any confusion about what's coming before us. So, as you know, the council, it started with the council, we had to send it to the Planning Board for Recommendation, thank you. We have, having, we had to send it to the Planning Board for their recommendation, they came back with an advisory opinion by a vote of 4 to 3, which is in your packet. I just want to go through what the amendments are, so there's no confusion and misunderstanding. So, the, the first thing we do is we add a definition of construction demolition processing facility, which comes basically right out of state law, so that will amend the definition section. Adds to the use tables. Then we add it to the use tables, because it's a new use, we have to add it, and it's on industrial uses. So that Section 13 would be amended to add that to the use table. And then, oh, excuse me, one of the major changes is that the, we had it as a right, as a permitted right, I can't even think of the term, permitted, permitted use. By right, I'm sorry, by right. The Planning Board recommended that they, we go to a special use permit. Because they required a special use permit, they recommended a special use permit, then they came up with what the state law requires, criteria for specific categories of special use permits, and they put the, what those special use permit criteria are. And that is on page 5. My understanding is that the applicant was before the Planning Board and agreed to most, if not all, of these. So again, these are, so this is what would, if it remains a special use permit, there would be a formal application for the special use permit, it would require a notice to butters within 200 feet. And then there would be a hearing as to whether or not they meet these, these criteria, special, the objectives, objective criteria. So those are, those are what the Planning Board has recommended, so it's a little different from what we sent them. And again, this is just advertising, this will be subject to a public hearing at a later date, those changes.
So, I'm looking for a motion to advertise the proposed amendments and set the public hearing. Okay, any further discussion?
Can I just question that? So, when the Planning Board did do this, there was a lot of restrictions from the state, but also the Planning Board put in several other restrictions above and beyond the state to try to protect. Environmental, and that the applicant did really agree to above and beyond. There was a lot of work that went into this.
And again, I understand that there's been some opposition, a public hearing is the perfect time to, to bring that opposition forward. So, all in favor?
Thank you.
Mister Administrator and the Solicitor, resolution to authorize the town administrator to take all necessary actions subject to meeting all requirements in the purchase and sale agreement to close on the property in the industrial park with R and D Recycling LLC for Assessor's Platte 107, lots 705 through 710 for future development. This is on our agenda because in the event that these amendments to the zoning do pass, that was one of the criteria for the proposed purchaser in order to purchase, so this gives them the authority to immediately.
My recommendation, however, would go into executive session to discuss the purchase and sale agreement, which you have before you, which has that as a condition, because there were changes to the purchase and sale agreement, we can talk about that. And then if you authorize that, then we come back and.
All right, so in that case, I'd like to lay on the table item J, and I'd like to make a motion to go into close executive session. Administrator Jones, Rhode Island General Law, 42465A5, discussion and possible vote on the disposition of publicly-held property and lots in the Tiverton Industrial Park related to purchase and sale. Have a second. Counselor Camino.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Janik.
Yes.
Counselor Demidaris.
Yes.
I'm a yes, Counselor Paul.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
All right, we now close executive.